Welcome to tonight's Yountville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, June 6th, 2017. We did meet, starting at 3:30 today, in a special meeting to discuss the membership of the Envision Yountville General Plan Town Advisory Group, as well as holding interviews for the applicants for the Yountville Community Foundation Board of Directors. So I'm calling our regular meeting to order now and asking our town clerk for roll call, please.
Councilmember Durham?
Here.
Councilmember Dorman?
Here.
Councilmember Moller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Doran Becker?
Here.
Mayor Dunbar?
Here. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Pledge of Allegiance) To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Next up, adoption of the agenda, and I am going to propose that we move one item back. So Item 13A, the Strategic Plan Framework, we are going to push back two items. So the first regular administrative item will be 13B regarding the rental registration program. So I'm guessing one or two of you out there are here for that. And then the other two or three people out there are probably here for the Yountville Chamber of Commerce conversation about the professional services agreement. So we're going to move those two items up to the first two administrative regular items and have the Strategic Plan Framework as the third item in Section 13 of the agenda. I don't believe we have any other changes, so with that adjustment to the agenda, is there a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
I make a motion we adopt tonight's agenda.
A second.
Thank you. And Michelle, were you doing the vote casting? Okay, here we go. Please vote. And we're off to a good start with a unanimous 5-0 vote for the agenda. Let's go on to our proclamation, recognition of the town Finance Director and Finance Department for their excellent work. Town Manager?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's my distinct pleasure to present to the town on behalf of the Government Finance Officers' Association in recognition of the Finance Department, Finance Director Maria Ojeda, and the town staff, continued recognition and certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the town's comprehensive annual financial report. So I'd like to invite Maria to join me at the podium so we can make this official.
On behalf of the Town Council, I want to thank you and our Finance Department and the entire staff that does such a great job every year, not only setting up our budget, but also executing the budget and all the details and making sure that we stay fiscally healthy and responsible. So, thank you very much. Thank you. Do you want to say a few words? Please.
Well, I just want to thank the Council for their continued support and the town staff for all of their hard work. The Finance Department is a little department that supports all of the departments in the city, but we couldn't do the work that we do without your help and support and your trust in us, but also the good policy decision-making that you make every year, every day, all the time to keep the town fiscally sound. So, thank you for all that you do.
Thank you very much.[253.81][253.81](Applause) Next up, it's with mixed feelings that we recognize one of our favorite Yountville Town Staff members, our Recreation Coordinator Carol Rasmussen. And before I come down to present you with your certificate of appreciation, I just want to mention on behalf of the Council, when we had our lunch for you a couple weeks ago, not only did we have basically the entire town staff show up in support of your efforts for our community, especially for our children, but I remember specifically the photo array that we had on repeat throughout the lunch, and I made the comment, there wasn't a single photo without every single child in that photo with a smile on their face. So, that in large part is your legacy with us. So, with that, if you would please join me at the podium.
Okay.
I'll start with the adult beverage.
Oh, good!
You know what we like to do here in Yountville.
Perfect!
So, again, something that you can enjoy in your retirement with your husband.
Thank you very much.
Maybe while you're enjoying the... No, you're not going to share it with anybody? No, with the Father's Day car show when you're sitting out there.
Oh, yeah, we'll be there. We're in there.
But I do want to, on behalf of the Town Council, read this certificate of appreciation. And for those of you who know, and she's showing her colors tonight, purple is her thing. So, we had to go with a special purple certificate for Carol.
Of course, thank you.
In recognition of Carol Rasmussen's 12 years of service as a Town of Yountville employee, it is an honor to celebrate 12 years of dedicated and conscientious service on the part of Carol Rasmussen to the Town of Yountville. Carol began her career in Yountville on August 22nd, 2005, and has served the town well as a Recreation Coordinator in its Parks and Recreation Department. Carol serves as an exemplary model of a public servant dedicated to providing quality service above and beyond to the town, which she also calls home.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.[391.02][391.02](Applause)
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Please.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, you have to.
For sure.[398.02][398.02](Laughter) Okay, so, I started to think about my career here with the Town of Yountville, and I remember on my very first day on the job, I had my brand-new purple Skechers on, and this little boy came up and he just threw up all over me.[427.12][427.12](Laughter) And at that point, I thought, "Do I stay or do I go? Is this what I want?" And needless to say, I stayed. And this same little boy, Thomas Jarman, remember him? Yes? He is now a senior in high school, and I ran into him the other day with a beard, okay, and he said, "Miss Carol, do you remember me?" And I'm thinking, "Oh, boy." And he said, "Do you remember when I got sick on your first day of work?" He said, "You helped me and you even cleaned me up." And I'm thinking, "You remember that?" And I thought, "Wow, I did make a difference." And I have had, I have so many stories and so many wonderful things that have happened to me here with my experience here at the town. I'm going to be good. And, but I just, it's amazing, the people, the support, this community is so welcoming and so wonderful. And to be able to go anywhere in this town, and I feel like I know everybody, and it's just, the parents have just been so welcoming, and the compassion that I have for these children and the compassion that they have for me is overwhelming. And one of the little boys came up to me today and said, "You can't leave us? What are you thinking?" And I told him, "I'm not going far and I'm not leaving." And in the words of one of the little boy, he asked me which retirement home I was going to.[517.87][517.87](Laughter) And I told him that I'm going to the retirement home at the house I've been at for a long time, and that he was always welcome to come and join me and visit me at my retirement home and visit. But I just want to thank the Council, and I thank the staff and all of this community and my coworkers, Sam. Fabulous. Amazing opportunities, and I just want to thank everybody so much for everything. You guys are so wonderful, and I will miss you all, but I'm going to be here. I'm not going to go far. Watch out, I'm here.[556.62][556.62](Laughter) Thank you so much.
Thanks, Carol.
Thank you.[561.12][561.12](Applause)
We're going to move on to our public comment portion for tonight, so if anyone in the audience would like to address the Council on something not on our agenda this evening, now would be the time to do that. So you're all here for an agendized item? No? Debbie, go ahead.
Hello. I know all the Councilmembers for the... I don't know if I'm supposed to say my address. I live on Larkspur Street, Debbie Alterstar. I want to revisit the idea of an off-leash dog area, and I'm specifically not going to say Dog Park because it would not meet, resemble the way that parks for dogs look in cities. It's the taco truck of dog areas, so to speak. And Margie Moller will remember when we first started looking at this in, I guess, like 2005, I have some correspondence from it. The town, the new Parks Commission at that time, the newly-commissioned Parks Commission that Jeffrey was on, looked at it, but looked at it in existing areas used by people that people were really attached to, and so it wasn't a go. So my proposal, real simple, is that I'd like us to have a process for you electeds to ask the town to look at the area between the backside of the tennis courts and the agricultural area. It does not, there's an area there that does not butt up into anyone's house. You can't even see it from the street. There's just one house that I believe someone might have to press their nose to the window and possibly even stand on their tiptoes, I don't know, to even catch a corner of it. This can only improve that area. My proposal's for a temporary pilot, just put up some fencing. If someone has a drivable into the area tractor, just level out slightly, not an official leveling, move over trashcan there, there's already water, there's already bathroom, and keyless, key entry and keyless exit for residents only, and give it a go, and do it for four months or maybe six months. And every month, when the Parks Commission meets, we can check and see how it's doing and see if there's really any usage issues. But we're talking about a really small quantity of people who live in town, but like me, you know, come after work, and this is our time to meet our neighbors. And this is our primary source of recreation, is walking our dog. So, I would like the town to start by doing a quick survey, putting it up to see how many dog owners would use it in this town. And if there's not like enough to make it worth looking at, then that's the end of that. But if we have, I don't know, 20 people or, you know, couples even, sometimes that adds up to being 30 or 40, who would be interested, then take some next steps. So, again, this is, would not be in a usable area. It's not even a developed or watered area. I'm not even suggesting it be watered for the purpose of the pilot. And it would not be open to other people. And again, it's not the size, when you see Dog Park, if you Google it, it'll say for city, and it'll say one acre. But if you look at, for example, people who run daycare businesses for animals or kennels, they routinely exercise dogs in a small area. They don't have an acre to do that typically. There's actually some formulas for how many dogs you could have within certain square feet that would be okay. And I'm sure we would fall way under the number of dogs and way beyond the square footage typical even for a busy kennel. So, that's what I'd like to ask. I really appreciate us taking a look at it. It has been, was that 2008, so almost coming up on 10 years since we looked at it. I think it's time to revisit again with the general plan. So, and with respect for people for whom this is a source of recreation, there's always going to be people for and against things. Last time, people were really critical that there's some people who are not good about picking up their poops, or, you know, if that, life is that way, we shouldn't have wine served in this town because some people will be irresponsible with wine, or we shouldn't have bicycles in this town because some people blow through the stop signs. This is just how life is. So, I appreciate us taking a look at it again and trying to fast-track it during the dry season and see how it goes. Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to bring up an item to the Council? Okay, seeing no others, we'll move on to our consent calendar for consideration. Are there any questions? If not, is there action to be had on the seven items on the consent calendar? Somebody like to make a motion?
We'll make a motion that we approve, approve the tonight's consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Adopted.
A second.
Thank you. And please vote. When that passes unanimously, thank you very much. Next up, we have a presentation from our Yountville Chamber of Commerce and the annual report. Welcome.
Good evening, Council, Mayor Dunbar, Vice Mayor Doran Becker, Town Staff. For those of you that don't know me in the audience, my name is Whitney Diver McAvoy. I'm the President and CEO for the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, here to present our annual report. Super excited to be here this evening. We've accomplished a lot in the last year, and I'm looking forward to sharing that with you tonight. So, first off, is an overview of what's included in the presentation this evening, and there are some paper copies in front of you as well. First off, a little bit about the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, a snapshot of our accomplishments for this year, including a little overview of the brand platform project that we worked on, our visitor statistics for the Welcome Center and our website, social media marketing, including Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, as well as TripAdvisor, our marketing events, which I know you all are familiar with, Festival of Lights, Yountville Live and Taste of Yountville, as well as we'll get an update from our public relations firm, the Karen McKenzie Public Relations Company, and then a little overview about what's next for next year. All right, so first, a little bit about us. This is our mission and vision statement. So, the mission of the Yountville Chamber of Commerce is governed by a volunteer Board of Directors that'll actively market the Town of Yountville and the Chamber members to promote tourism, the local businesses, while contributing to the quality of life in our community. Our vision statement is working with the community and business leaders to maintain Yountville's reputation as the cultural and culinary heart of the Napa Valley and provide services necessary to be relevant to our membership. Okay, so here's an overview of our Board of Directors. We currently have 13 members of our board, a few of which are here with us tonight, including the Chair of our Board, Eric Housley. Thank you, Eric, for all of your service over the last many, many years. Shane Solander is also here from Silver Trident, Steve Rogers, of course, with the Town of Yountville, Richard Hall with Cliff Lady Family Vineyards, Devin Avery, who is the Chair of our ambassadors, as well as an associate member, James Stewart with Stewart Sellers. We're currently also courting new Board of Director members, so if there's anyone out there that is interested, I'd love to speak with you about joining our board. Our organization chart. So things have changed in the last year. I came on board with the Chamber on July 1st of 2016. I can't believe it's been almost a year. It's gone super fast, but we've had a lot of changes, so I wanted to give everybody a refresh of how we're organized. So, we're governed by our Board of Directors and our Executive Committee. I run the day-to-day operations of the Yountville Chamber along with our members of staff. We recently hired a new Director of Membership and Sales, and her name is Elizabeth Heacock. She's here tonight. Mary, thank you. And then, we also just hired a new Operations and Membership Manager, Jessica Pennman, who's also here tonight. We also brought on a new accounting firm, Reich and Associates, to standardize our budget practices and to make sure we were in line with that stuff. We also have a full-time social media contractor, Allison Day, who has worked with us on a full social media strategy for the last year. And then, of course, Karen McKenzie, who's our public relations firm. We also have a Chamber ambassadors. We have three total currently, but are looking for more Chamber ambassadors. Devin is the Chair of that program and is doing great work. They go out in the community and represent the Chamber to local businesses and residents. And then, Marion Ladbrook is also here. Thank you, Marion, for coming tonight. She works at the Welcome Centers on the weekend for us, and she's been a huge help. And then, our Welcome Center, which is fully staffed with 34 volunteers. We have them come in every day, and they help run that facility for us, and they're absolutely wonderful. Couldn't do it without them. So, I wanted to give a little overview of what we're committed to. So, the Chamber has definitely gone through a little bit of a renaissance this last year, and we're looking to continue to build relationships in the community and to strengthen what we're doing for our residents as well as our business members. So, operating under four lines of business, and that's connect, promote, champion, and grow business. So, what do we do with connect? We're cultivating strong relationships between businesses, and then we're also cultivating strong relationships between businesses and Yountville residents, which I know is very important to us within our community. Promote. We're marketing and promoting Yountville as a premier destination, as the heart of Napa Valley. We champion. We're improving the economic well-being and quality of life in our community, and we're growing business by providing tools, resources, and opportunities to help grow our member businesses with and around Yountville. Okay, so our membership. Who are they? What do they do? Right now, we have 292 members. That's 204 business members, and then we also have resident members. Right now, we have a total of 88 resident members, and we'll be focusing heavily on that program this year to help grow that number quite significantly. We're partnering with Sam and Parks and Rec on different programs, as well as provide different discounts without, throughout the businesses in Yountville. Our membership by category, you'll see, most of our members are wineries, obviously. We also have tours and transportation, nonprofits, restaurants, hotels, and shopping. The other category includes things like art galleries, retirement services, attractions, ballooning, et cetera. Here's a little overview of our budget. Our budget for this fiscal year was a little over $600,000. We are forecasting to end around $626,000. That variance is around $22,000. We made a little bit more money in terms of revenue coming in with Festival of Lights than we initially expected. Our total number for expenses, we budgeted around $610,000. We're forecasting to be around $598,000, and that savings is around $11,000. That's mostly because we waited to hire a third person to bring onto our staff until around February. And we're expecting to profit around $27,000, which we're actually going to reinvest right away with some projects I'm going to talk about in just a little bit. Okay, snapshot of our accomplishments. We've done a lot this year, and it's pretty exciting. So, first and foremost was to run an effective business. You can't do anything else until you take care of your house first, and that was one of my main focuses for the first three months. That included new budget practices, bringing on a new accounting firm, reorganizing our priorities to better serve our members and our community, and then hiring new staff to then execute those priorities, and then restructuring our volunteer hours and their duties. Additionally, we reaffirm that our focus, the board did, is to focus on a chamber that also does destination marketing for the destination of Yountville. We also decided to create a year-round social media strategy, and we successfully executed, which you'll see those results in just a few slides. We leased the Taste of Yountville to Live in the Vineyard to elevate that experience for our community members and for tourists. We were actively involved in making sure that that event really focused on Yountville and expressed who we are as a community. We ran an effective Festival of Lights. There were a lot of people in town, but it was effective. And then, we managed a marketing firm to create a brand platform and member toolkit, and I'll review that brand platform in just a minute. And then, some other accomplishments that I wanted to highlight. We've entered into a new partnership with the TID of Yountville to manage a dedicated marketing spend for October 1 through April 30. Those will be the first of our kind for our destination here. It's something that the only other town in the valley that is doing that is Visit Napa Valley is doing that for the whole valley, but no other single municipality is doing that for themselves at this scale. So it's pretty exciting. Our ongoing PR efforts to promote the destination. We are currently developing a new membership program with enhanced benefits for both our businesses and our resident members. We have ups the fun with our monthly mixers, now having them regularly at great different locations. I know you have all attended. Thank you. So we're continuing to grow those each month. We've also started industry-specific networking groups. Our first one was for tasting rooms and wineries. We had a fabulous turnout for our first meeting, and our next meeting is actually at the end of June, and we're looking to expand that to the other categories in town, including hotels and restaurants and retail. We've had several successful ribbon cuttings for new businesses in town, such as Arena Galleries and ODOMO. We renewed collaboration with other chambers throughout the valley, including partnering with the Napa Chamber on mixers, as well as the St. Helena Chamber, and our June mixer will actually be with the Napa Chamber at Pine Ridge. And then, our Welcome Center refresh, more volunteers, streamlining of our merchandise, and a refocus on the information that we're delivering to tourists. So that was kind of a lot. So that's what we've done already for this year, and I'm going to kind of dive into a few different things. Hopefully, you're not too bored yet. Our brand platform. This is something that the Marketing Committee and TID worked on for the last year with the help of Steve Rogers, really pushed this agenda forward, and I'm really glad we did. So what is a brand platform? We, as a group, worked together with a professional marketing firm called Marion Carson. They do marketing for Visit Napa Valley, as well as Visit California. Those commercials you see on TV with Rob Lowe surfing and then people are skiing, that's them, to develop a brand platform for our town. So this is the essence of what Yountville is. And we came up with Passagiatà, which is an Italian term. I'll read the definition because it's a little bit different. "The tradition of Passagiatà is a gentle evening stroll through the main streets of town. This ritual reinforces a sense of belonging and a time to unwind. In Yountville, a stroll is an opportunity to experience the endearing heart of the community in an intimate setting at any day of time, any time of day. This personal Passagiatà allows us to belong, be in the moment, enjoy, unwind, and relax." I think this fully embodies what Yountville is. And we will be executing to this brand platform with our dedicated marketing spend for October 1 through April 30. This information is also going to be distributed to all of our members in the next month or so, so that they can coordinate their own marketing spend around this definition. So the idea is, high tide lifts all ships. So we're all talking in the same type of language, so we have an even broader reach with what we're doing. Our visitor statistics. So currently, we have 33 volunteers. Since June 2016 to April 2017, we saw around 23,000 visitors. Those are people that actually came into the Welcome Center. We likely had way more than that, but those are the people that we clocked in. 65% of those were from the US, 35% were international, and our highest visitor count was the month of August of 2016. So we continually track this data. We also feed that back up to Visit Napa Valley, so when they're doing their visitor profiles and studies, they have that data from us here in Yountville. Visitor statistics for yountville.com. We operate the destination website for the town. So far, from January 2016 through December 2016, we saw 134 visitors to the website. That is, the green bars are 2016. And then, 2017, from January 2017 to April, we've seen 38,000. So it's about half the year, so we still have a while to go, but I wanted to show you the difference from the past year. So far, March, July, and November have been our highest months of traffic. March and November make sense. You have Taste of Yountville, Yountville Live, and Festival of Lights, so that's when the most marketing effort has been done by us to drive people to our website. July, maybe they all just want to come here. Not sure. A little bit, delving a little bit deeper into those statistics and who's actually coming to our website, age demographics is pretty in line with the typical visitor we see to Napa Valley. Age 25 to 54 is where you see the most concentration. And in terms of the states that are visiting our website, California, of course, the highest, Texas, New York, and Florida, which is pretty typical with the visitor that you see coming to the valley. The gender demographics, skewed to female, also in line with the whole valley. And the devices used, this is really interesting, 51% on their desktop, which would say that it's probably an older audience that is visiting our website. Our social media strategy, this is something I'm really proud of. We've made a lot of progress on social media, and it started all with this strategy that we developed actually in July of last year. We had three top priorities. One was to promote member content, specifically our hotels in town to drive overnight stays. And then, two, promoting our different members throughout Yountville and the surrounding area. Second was to drive website traffic, drive traffic to our member websites, and then drive traffic to yountville.com. And third, build our brand. Establish the Yountville social media strategy, or social media channels as the credible source on all things Yountville, which I think we've done super successfully. Okay, here's where you really get to see what's happened on social media. This is our statistics for Facebook. In June 2016, we had 14,000 likes, and in April 2017, we had just a little under 20,000. In June 2016, we had 14,000 likes, and in April 2017, we had just a little under 20,000. We've actually surpassed 20,000 now. You'll see the total number of impressions is almost 1.5 million. That's tripled from 2016. With our Facebook users we've reached, it's almost 1.2 million, also tripled. So we've been super successful in terms of building our engagement, our impressions, and our users' reach. This has been done through a combination of paid ads, boosted posts, and just quality content. You'll see the impressions by location, mostly in the U.S., Mexico, and Canada, as well as the demographics. They are still in line with what we're seeing across the valley, skewing female, and as well as the age demographics are in line with what we see for the full Napa Valley visitor. Twitter. Twitter's been a little bit more difficult for us, but we've still made some really good progress. We've grown our engagement significantly from 7,000 people to over 31,000 people. Our followers has jumped up almost 1,000, which has been good. We're tweeting three times a day, unique content, or we retweets every single time. So that's been really great. And our impressions is 260,000. Instagram. If you're not following us on Instagram, I would highly suggest it, because we are posting really awesome stuff. And that's just retweeting or re-Instagramming photos that our visitors have taken in town, and then they're interacting with us on our Instagram feed, which is fantastic. So we've grown our followers significantly, including our engagement. You'll see our total likes that we've received from June 2016 to April 2017 has been 26,000, and our total comments has been 766. And I'm sure this has already increased since I put this together. Okay, so how do we compare? We have more Facebook followers than all the towns combined in the valley. That's excluding Visit Napa Valley. They're kind of operating on a different playing field. But if you'll, you can see the numbers there. In terms of Twitter, we're lagging a little bit. But Instagram, we're also a little bit ahead there. St. Helena is ahead of us by just a tad. But Facebook, you really see the improvement there. Okay, so if you're not following us on social media, I'd like to ask you to do so. And our handles are, on Facebook, it's @YountvilleChamber. On Twitter, it's @YountvilleCA. And on Instagram, it's @YountvilleCA. So we're constantly posting different information about our members. Like yesterday, we posted about the Veterans Memorial Dedication. So it's very current and fresh. So I invite you to join us on our social media platforms. TripAdvisor. So we also run the TripAdvisor page for the destination. This is also performing very well. So far, we've had 6,735 direct clicks from our banner ads. These banner ads run throughout TripAdvisor, as well as on our dedicated TripAdvisor page. And those clicks are going to our partner websites, as well as yountville.com. Our page altogether, from August to March, has received over 72,000 page views. We will be continuing our partnership with TripAdvisor and the Yountville TID in the coming year, and we're looking to grow our impressions and our engagement there even further. Yountville Events. Okay, so we have our 20th Annual Festival of Lights this year. We sold 1,400 tickets, approximately 2,200 attended. If you were there, you know it looked like 5,000, but that was my estimated guess. We had over 23 wineries participate, 15 restaurants, 15 retail shops. Thank you to Laurel and the V Marketplace for that. And we had two live bands. We net profit around $3,200. We also had our 12th Annual Celebrity Chef Veterans Day Luncheon. We served 1,100 veterans that day. Seven chefs participated from town. 16 wineries participated, and we had over 66 volunteers. I know many of you have volunteered at this in the past. Thank you. If there's anyone out there that would like to volunteer in the future, it's a wonderful event to serve our veterans. Additionally, we also had Yountville Live and Taste of Yountville. We're, of course, still working through those events and making improvements each year. For The Taste of Yountville, we had about 22,000 people attend over two days. And I also like to note, at our gala dinner, we had Baccus Dior Gold Medal winners, Matthew Peters and Comey Harris-Turone, which was really wonderful to have them here for that. At Taste of Yountville, we had over 60 wineries participate, 36 chefs, eight cooking demos, and eight performing artists. So I know they're already planning for next year and are even more ahead of the game than they were last year. So we're looking forward to seeing what fun things that they bring to the table. Okay, with that, I'd like to introduce Karen McKenzie with the Karen McKenzie Public Relations Company to tell you about our public relations efforts.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Mayor, thank you for having me. Just to give you a quick recap of what the almost-full year looks like. We're just north of 200 million impressions. This is all driven by publicity, of course, what we refer to as earned media. And to give you a sense of the greatest hits so far this year, this was a multi-page feature in the San Francisco Chronicle. And this came about because we wanted to drive day traffic up to Yountville from the 100-mile radius of the little town. And this was a significant national hit, Travel and Leisure, that hit an enormous audience of about 10 million people. And it was also featured on Travel and Leisure's Facebook page, which attracted another 2.2 million consumers, readers. And a very nice feature on the town. What we try to do as your agency is not focus on one hotel or one restaurant. We're looking for a roundup, so that all of the elements, every stakeholder is, has the opportunity to be featured. So it's a nice roundup story about many facets of the town. This couple, the Travel Bite couple, their expertise is food and travel. And they appear often on The Today Show, and this was a significant hit that they did for us, again, featuring multiple hotels, restaurants, entertainment, and recreational venues within the town. Wine Country this week had the Festival of Lights on their cover on October 29. And we were very pleased with the coverage and photography. We also support the TID with arranging of media familiarization tours. And typically, we send a query out to media once a quarter, looking to generate interest by a high-profile journalist. And these are the folks that have been through the town, and we do custom itineraries for them, rather than doing group visits, because we feel as though we get more out of them if they're here on an individual basis. And so we make sure that their itinerary is customized to their media beat and following. So we have Rebecca Holland, The Huffington Post. We've had Fodder's, who just finished their trip at the end of the first quarter. And the Palm Beach and Naples Illustrated, that was a big hit for us, because Naples auction is always neck and neck with the Napa auction. So that demographic was a nice one to have at hand. It's a sense of the results to date. Typically, we heavy up with these visitors during the shoulder season, first quarter of the year. So we're just really starting to see the results come in. And we have journalists scheduled through October of this coming year. But there's the Palm Beach-Naples Illustrated. Palm Beach Illustrated is the first to go when the revolution comes. It's very, very, very high-end affluent. And in addition to the media relations work that we've done, we developed the content for TripAdvisor. We keep the media posted regularly on calendar listings. We do results reporting for Whitney and the board. We do website content support when requested. We're involved with day-to-day stakeholder engagement to plan these itineraries and so on, to stay current on what's happening and what's new in the town. And with that, I will turn this back over to Whitney.
Thanks, Karen. One more slide. Okay, so what's next? So you've heard an overview of what we've done this last year. We have a bunch of exciting things coming up this year. So first off, we are rolling out a new membership benefits and membership program for our business members, which include new ways for them to engage and additional services that we will provide to them. We are fully redoing the website, yountville.com, with the goal of it being ready by October 1st. So that is going to be our big project over the summer. And we are rolling out an updated residence program, like I mentioned before, including discounts for our different businesses in town and an increased partnership with SAM's and Park and Rec. We will be rolling out our industry-specific networking groups with retail hotels and restaurants, in addition to our tasting and winery groups. We will be having our dedicated marketing spend for Yountville for October 1 through April 30, which will include a social media and digital ad spend throughout those six months there, through shoulder season. We will be having our first annual Membership Jubilee, which will be a community event for our residents and members in town. We're looking at the spring of next year, should be super fun in the Yountville Community Park. And then we are also working on a newly imagined, community-focused Festival of Lights. I'm looking forward to telling you about that in a little bit. And then a coordinated and focused year-round marketing, PR, and social media strategy that goes from July 1 to June 30. With that, I'd like to thank you for bearing with me through all those slides, for your continued support and engagement with the chamber. I know you guys really appreciate what we're doing. I appreciate what you guys are doing, and I'm looking forward to building on our partnership that we have had so far and making it even better. So that'll pause for questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Whitney and Karen. Does the council have any questions of the presentation?
Good presentation.
Got a lot of great information in there and very positive results. It's been very impressive.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
See, it helps to have some of your membership in the audience. Okay, we're going to move on to our first of two public hearings for this evening, and this one is related to use permit application for the French Corner Napa.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Tonight, you have before you an application for a new use permit for the French Corner Napa food truck that would be located at 6764 Washington Street on Sundays. The subject property is where Poncha's is, and the truck would be parked exactly where Tacos Garcia is already parked, Mondays through Saturdays. Tacos Garcia received approval back in 2009 to operate a food truck from the Poncha's parking lot, just there along the south property line. The approved hours of operation are 11:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. The business is closed on Sundays. And Tacos Garcia opened on July 6, 2009, and has been in operation ever since. The applicant before you proposes the French Corner Napa food truck to operate from the site on Sundays, when Tacos Garcia isn't there. French Corner will serve authentic French crepes, both sweet and savory, and the applicant is requesting to open two hours earlier in order to serve a morning crowd. Crepes naturally work better for breakfast at 9:00 a.m. than tacos. And so 9:00 a.m. is the proposed opening hour for that. Food would be provided to go. No tables or chairs are proposed for onsite consumption, and only two employees are necessary to operate the business, and they'll both drive the food truck to and from the site on Sundays. All new commercial uses within the Old Town Commercial Zoning District, where this property resides, do require a unique use permit approval to do accessory uses. The primary use of the property is Poncha's, but because Tacos Garcia and French Corner Napa represent an accessory use, that's why we're here this evening as part of the use permit process. Now, based on the successful shared use of the site historically with Poncha's and Tacos Garcia, and the absence of any significant impact, staff is of the opinion that the French Corner food truck could occupy the site in the same manner. Another food service option on Sunday is viewed as a positive outcome for the neighborhood. Standard set of conditions of approval are included in the use permit resolution. Unique conditions tied to this use permit include the requirement that the applicant provide at least one trash can for its customers, and that the applicant also not serve any alcohol. There's also a condition that a review be conducted by town staff six months after occupancy of the space, in order to assure that all the conditions of the use permit are working to reduce impacts and in order to address any impacts that might occur within that six-month review stage. Now, with that brief staff report, we're here to answer questions that you might have, and there's also representatives from the applicant to answer any questions.
Thank you. Questions to the staff report? We'll get it to the public hearing. I do have two questions for you. I remember when we went through this with Tacos Garcia, there's a requirement to have access to restrooms. And what does that mean if the earlier hours of operation and if Poncha's is not open? Is that a problem?
That hasn't been included in the use permit, but that could be something that is covered within this six-month review. If it seems like there is an issue with that, we'd be able to come back and tie in some kind of condition during that.
But it is item 11.
It's in the resolution.
It's item 11.
Right. It's already in there.
Sorry. Adequate toilet facilities.
In writing.
My concern is the earlier hours. I know that it was an issue when the original Tacos Garcia permit came up, but it was understood that they would have access to Poncha's restrooms.
Okay.
With the earlier hours, that's what I'm just wondering if that's going to be a problem for them to comply.
Right. We'd need to make sure to coordinate with the managers at Poncha's to make sure the restrooms are available to them during those hours.
Because if I remember, that is a requirement that they have.
It would be.
Restroom facilities available. And also, it may be in the conditions about the exact location of the truck.
Yeah, it would be. It's not listed, again, in the conditions at the exact location, but it would be expected to be on the south property line, the same place where Tacos Garcia parks.
So instead of expected, I would like to see that explicit, we made a very explicit discussion and result for Tacos Garcia, based on resident impacts on the east side of the fence. So I would want to see that as a condition if we're going to consider this. Any other questions to the staff report? Councilmember Doorman.
Thank you. On the trash receptacle, are they responsible for emptying it, or is it just an open trash receptacle? How will that work?
They provide it, but also be in charge of taking care of it at the end. And so either taking it with them or emptying it in some way.
And should we specify that in the conditions of approval, so they just don't leave a trash receptacle there?
We could do that.
And then I had, when do you expect this would start, the service?
That would be a question for the applicant.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions before I open the hearing? Okay, with that, I'll go ahead and open the public hearing and this invite the applicant to please come forward and tell us all about it.
Good evening. So thanks for having me tonight. So the thing is, I've been working in Yountville for seven years with Potega. Here, I started to make crepes with Joel. I don't know if you remember him at Hogsboro. So now it's just me, so I would love to come back in Yountville to try to make people enjoy my product. So if you're okay with that, that will be lovely.
The one question that Councilmember Doorman just asked about the expectation of removal of the trash.
Oh, yeah, we'll take, I will bring probably, I don't even know if I need all the trash, like the greens, and with just one, will be okay. But we'll take all the trash with me, for sure.
That's something that you would work out with staff to know, whatever's required of the business.
Sounds great.
Okay, well, thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you so much.
I invite anyone else that's here from the public that would like to comment on this item. Please come forward. Hello?
Hi. My name's Felix Flynn, 6712 Washington Street at Padrone. My question is, we know that it's going to open early, as proposed. What time will it close?
Right now, the condition is to allow 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., because 9:00 p.m. is the same time that Tacos Garcia.
But this is Sunday evening, and usually people want their quiet time in the evening. Other businesses are closed along Innoio, and it's generally, you know, things aren't allowed on Sundays, like, I'm thinking of people doing landscaping work and things like that. Do you think 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock might be a more reasonable time?
You can address the council with your questions. Once you list all your questions, then we'll respond to you.
That's it.
Okay. So the hours of operation are your concern?
Yeah, they are. Thank you.
Thank you. So Nathan, if you want to speak to that now?
Yeah. The reason the resolution says 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. is because Tacos Garcia currently has approval to operate until 9:00 p.m. The applicant has let me know that he plans to start off with only being opening until 3:00 p.m.
And that's a, the hours of operation is certainly up to our
Correct.
...conditions and our approval. Okay. Would anyone else like to speak to this? Mr. Stewart? Mr. Stewart?
I'm your man.
Not yet, you aren't.
Not yet. James Stewart from Stewart Sellers. I just want to second your concern about the bathroom. If there isn't one available for his customers, the nearest bathroom is mine. So I just want to, I would be concerned about traffic on a Sunday morning, kind of, I don't know what his volume's going to be, I don't know how many people I'm going to have on the property who need a bathroom in the morning, so I just kind of, that's a concern of mine, and I just want to, you know, kind of address it personally. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing no one else, I'll close the public hearing and return to the council for discussion. Would anyone like to start the dialogue? Or shall I pick someone? Councilmember Mueller?
I'm fine with the hours of operation. We have a six-month review in this.
Correct.
Currently. So, based on, that's what the current hours of operation are, I'm fine with that, but a six-month review, if we have problems, then I'm certainly very willing to change the hours at that time. And the bathroom, I did see it, as well as Councilmember Durham here in item 11, it says that the adequate facilities will be available within 200 feet of the mobile home preparation unit, I suppose, Stewart Sellers might also be 200 feet the other way, but, so we need to probably specify that as the Poncha's facility, right? So we need that one wording there?
Right. So in number 11, it does say that the owner-operator of the toilet facility shall provide written authorization, they'll provide the necessary facilities, so with that written authorization, we can also include the toilet operator to show the times that it will be made available.
Yeah, so I guess I don't really need Poncha's specified in there. If anybody within 200 feet wants to write a letter, I'm fine with that, so. All right, so that's my only thing, is I'm personally right now okay with the proposed hours, but a six-month review, so if they ever did extend it, it would be, would it be a later date?
It would, if they wanted to extend it beyond 3:00?
Okay, so their plan is 3:00, but the hours that we're approving is 9:00?
Correct.
Potentially. That's what's being requested.
Potentially. So that would be my concern, the review after six months, so I would want to only have that review if hours were extended, so I'd want the clock to start for the time review once the 9:00 time arrived.
Got it.
Otherwise, I am very excited about something new to Yountville, so.
So I'll invite Councilmember Dorman.
I don't have any further comments or concerns except the two that we've mentioned about the trash and the restroom, but I did recall that I don't think the applicant said when he would like to start.
Well, actually, the public hearing is closed, so we don't need to hear, we'll hear from, no, that's okay, you were just responding to our question, but, yeah, I'll ask Nathan, because we're not going to reopen the public hearing for that.
With approval of this use permit, they'd be able to open, to start.
Immediately, potentially.
Once all of the conditions of approval are satisfied, so the toilet operator letter would be necessary.
Okay. Any other comments?
No.
Councilmember Durham?
I agree with both councilmembers, but I also want to clarify, I'm completely fine with 9:00 p.m. Chichios is open past 9:00, Redwood is open past 9:00 on Sundays, Poncha's is open past 9:00 on Sundays, and R&amp;D is open past 9:00 on Sundays, so I have absolutely no problem with the 9:00 p.m. closed time.
Thank you. Rachel?
I'm absolutely delighted to welcome you to town, and looking forward to your crepes, they're the only kind of French food we don't have in our town.
What I would say is, I want to make sure that it's explicit in the conditions that restroom facility is identified. I seem to remember Tacos Garcia was required to have it onsite, and that's the whole point of having mobile vendor associated with a private property owner was to guarantee that that was accessible. The truck location, I want explicitly listed as well, that was a very sensitive topic that we had to navigate with the original application to avoid any impacts, whether it be odor, noise, or others back on that rear part of the property. Other than that, I see this as just a natural extension of the conditions that we already have seen as welcomed by our community. There's always a sensitivity to the impacts, whether it's people walking across the street illegally, endangering themselves and others, just, you know, respecting your neighbors, as Mr. Stewart pointed out, but we really have seen after just a couple fairly minor incidents of noise, when there was a change of no truck and then a truck, we've had virtually no complaints since then and a lot of enjoyment of that food opportunity, so I can support this application as well. So with that, I'd invite a motion from the council, if anyone would like to do that. Verbally first, please. Anyone? Anyone?
I'll make a motion to approve, approve Resolution Number 17-3410, approving a use permit request to locate a mobile food vending truck, French Corner Napa, on private property Poncha's located at 6764 Washington Street.
With the, are you, with the conditions as requested?
Yes, with the conditions as requested by the mayor.
You good with that, Nathan?
Yeah, do you want me to summarize what those conditions were for clarification?
Let's just be very clear about it.
So the first one is modification to number six, that the applicant also remove the trash can, not just provide it, but also be in charge of bringing it in and out, and then the addition of condition number 14, that the truck shall be located on the south property line along that wall.
And do we need any additional language about the restroom facilities, or you feel it's adequate?
As it states there, the owner-operator of the toilet facility shall provide written authorization, that it will provide the necessary facilities, if that's sufficient to you.
Very quick question, are you satisfied that that covers it?
Specifically as to the toilet issue?
Yes, the restroom facilities.
I believe it does.
Are there any other concerns that you had in terms of that language?
No, no, I just wanted to be clear of the question.
Okay. So is there a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. As soon as the screen comes up, please enter your vote. We always like the dramatic pause for the vote, and there we go with a 5-0 unanimous approval, so congratulations. Thank you for your application. We look forward to Whitney's latest addition, and I'm sure you'll be talking to her about membership to the Chamber of Commerce. She has cards with her if you need them.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to move on now to our next public hearing.
Hi Hector.
An introduction and consideration of the building height ordinance for second resident units. Is this Sandra? Is this you, I think?
Good evening. Tonight you have before you an ordinance that would amend the town's design standards as they relate to height of a second dwelling over an existing detached garage, and the history of bringing this item to you begins in September of 2016, when the governor signed into law an expanded ability of an owner or developer to develop a second dwelling, and also restricting the town's regulatory or discretionary authority to allow those where certain minimum standards were met. In April of this year, we introduced to you an ordinance that would amend the town's municipal code to bring it in line with the new state standards, and one of those standards allows a second dwelling over a detached garage that is set back just five feet from site and rear property lines, and this represents a significant change from the town's prior standards for dwellings over a detached garage that require between five and eight feet for the side property line and between 15 and 20 feet for the rear property line, depending on the zoning district that the property is located in. So when it was brought before council, there was discussion and concern what this could mean for the town, given its small lots, and what could be considered some heavy and tall massing for an adjoining property owner that just is not really currently found under existing conditions or allowed by code. So we were given direction to come back before you with some proposals that could limit that height and the massing impact, and that is the ordinance that we're presenting to you tonight. In, single-family residences are permitted to have a plate height of 20 feet and an overall height of 28 feet, and that's generally broken down into a first story of about 10 feet with a 12 to 14-foot ceiling or floor assembly, and then a second story of eight to nine feet. And the proposal before you would be to reduce that so that rather than a two-story height, you'd have something more like a one-and-a-half-story height, and that's done by allowing second-floor plate height of five feet, and the five feet, the plate height is what refers to really the exterior wall from ground or from floor assembly to the roof assembly. And this is permitted under California Building Code and meets the standards for habitability, where you have a sloping roof indoors and where you're able to achieve a minimum floor-to-ceiling height of seven-and-a-half feet. So what this does is by reducing the plate height, the massing or wall height is reduced for one of the adjoining neighbors, and the owner is able to achieve the ceiling height necessary for California Building Code, and it allows flexibility to design the roof line and doesn't penalize a proposal that is, that is, let me back up a little, we put a total height of 24 feet rather than 28 feet, and that still allows a roof line with a steeper pitch that is common to the town's neighborhoods, so we don't see a flat roof on top of that to minimize massing, because massing is associated more with the wall assembly than the roof assembly. So that is the proposal before you tonight, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Questions of the staff report?
No.
Councilmember Durham?
I just want to clarify, this is to keep in, so this is still allowing the setback that the governor has signed into law to allow for second units to be built on garages, and this is a modification that we're doing to allow that to happen, to still allow less massing for the neighbors around it.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. And so do I understand correctly that if someone has a garage that meets our current code setbacks, such as 18.16.050 and 18.20.020, then they can have 28 feet high? It's, this will apply only if there is an existing garage that is in the five-foot setback?
That is correct.
Okay. So very narrow.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
So my first question is, to expand on that, currently, the closest you can be to the rear setback and put a second floor on a garage is, what's the closest it can be?
20 feet.
And so what happens between 5 and 20 feet? So between 5 and 20 feet now, you're proposing the 24-foot maximum?
So let's say there's an existing garage that's set between 5 and 20 feet.
Yes.
They would meet the minimum five-foot setback and be permitted to go up under the provisions of this one-and-a-half-story height rather than the two-story.
Yeah, so only 24?
Right. They couldn't do the two-story until they met the full 20-foot setback.
Okay. And what, does this not create slanted ceilings in those second-floor units so that the sides of the room basically?
Are low.
Are very low?
Very low.
But they meet building code standards, even though?
They meet the minimum building code standard of five feet, and there has to be a minimum of 50% of the area that is a seven-and-a-half feet.
But it could be a challenge if our Public Works Director were to try to live in that space?
He probably would not like it, yes.
Okay.
It's meeting the code minimums, and we know that people like higher ceilings, and that's why the example I give you here, or even, let me go back to this example, this example is showing a 10-floor plate height for the garage on the first floor, which is really, it's the town's standard as to maximum for garages, we often see something much lower than the 10 feet, and then that would in turn affect the massing for the rest of the building. We'd measure on top of, let's say it's an eight-foot plate height, we'd measure to the five feet, and then roof height is not likely to go up that full 24 feet, but we are providing that to allow the flexibility to come to the floor-to-ceiling height of the seven-and-a-half feet. So I think we'll see structures that are smaller than the maximums proposed here, even at the one-and-a-half story.
And so are you basically requiring this type of pitched roof on any of these second units that are closer than our current standard?
It's the only way that it can be achieved to meet California Building Code, a slope ceiling indoors, yes.
Do we still, my concern remains, as we've talked about this five-feet setback in a second story, is privacy of adjacent property owners, and this doesn't necessarily change that privacy issue based on the height of our fences, but do you?
This is a massing issue only. We believe we've addressed the privacy issue with Ordinance 17-459 that you approved in April, and that includes provisions that a second story must utilize window techniques to minimize privacy impacts like placement above eye level or use of obscured glass.
Okay.
If I didn't read it to you, but it's in here already.
Thank you for that clarification. So those are my questions. Any others before I open the public hearing?
I have one more. Is there a, an easy-to-get-to formula if the maximum ceiling height went to eight-and-a-half feet, what that would mean to the overall height of the building? Is that a formula, or is it just math, bottom plus top?
It is a formula. It depends on the floor area they're looking at and the dimensions, and then the roof pitch that you're dealing with, and a 6 and 12 roof pitch is six vertical inches for every 12 horizontal ones, so you use those numbers together to determine what type of roof pitch is necessary to meet the minimum ceiling height.
So with that, I'll open the public hearing and invite any member of the public that would like to comment on this topic. Anyone? Anyone? Yes, Ms. Reeves?
Pam Reeves, 6887 Jefferson Street. When I was reviewing this particular ordinance, I was struck by what I think will be an awkward solution to an imagined problem. I feel like, number one, a design disaster could be the result of this, because you'd have a main house with a 6 and 12 roof slope, and then you would make a requirement of, say, a one-car garage with a 12 and 12 slope, and the resulting mismatch, we are all about trying to make things blend in, we require all these things of people when they build or remodel, that it should fit in, it should not be a jogging influence when you look at the whole project. I feel like the picture that shows the seven-and-a-half-foot roof height for the second floor, you're dooming whoever lives in that space to have five-foot-tall, like, I don't know, cupboards? What, how is somebody supposed to live in that, number one, where there's only seven-and-a-half feet in 50% of the space? It's already a small space. If it's a 10 by 20 garage, that's a ridiculously onerous provision to put on a space like that. And I feel like the intent of the whole California push is to make things that are habitable, that people would want to live in. This might be fun for a child, but for an adult who has to have a refrigerator and a washer dryer and a bathroom with a shower or a bathtub, where is that going to go? I mean, in a small space like 10 by 20, to have a stacker would be the ideal to take up less space, but if there's only five-foot walls on the, in the edges, where's that going to go, in the middle of the room? It's a design problem, and yeah, it might behoove us as a community to say that the applicant for these ideas of two-story over-the-garage come ideas of two-story over-the-garage come in and try to lessen the massing impact in some way, maybe a foot on their 28 feet or whatever, but this kind of prescription of, of an unusable space, what's the point? I mean, it's going to cost somebody a very lot of money to put something on the roof of their garage, and if it's not habitable, what's the point? I, I feel like Yountville shouldn't be restricting in this way. Working with the applicant might be, you might put some language that requires them to come in to show what it looks like from the neighbor's point of view and what it looks like from their point of view, and that they should work to reduce the massing. But this is a really awkward-at-best kind of solution, and I would really be disappointed if the town decided to be sort of frivolous like this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment?
Susan Doyle, 6911 Yount Street. Part of this probably relates to an application that I have made for a future structure that would allow for an opportunity for lower housing income, opportunity to rent as a property outside of my own home. From what I understand, within the Yountville area, low housing income is a major issue here, and that you are struggling every year to meet the current requirements because of the veterans' home and the amount of individuals that make up this size of a township. So I'm wondering why this is now, one, answering that question, but two, is this being pushed through? I thought that normally that there would be two hearings, not just one. So I'm wondering why it's, it's going through so quickly. Maybe somebody else could enlighten me, being a new owner to the area and trying to get hold of the understanding of the needs for the city, wanting to be a good new neighbor moving into town. Perhaps somebody can explain the new rulings.
I will do that.
Thank you.
So just so you're aware, this isn't the action tonight. It's an introduction and consideration of this ordinance. We do have two hearings on this, as we do on all items like this, so there is no official action taken tonight. If we accept this as written, it would be an introduction. A second reading would have to happen at a future meeting when it would be considered for formal adoption. So that's the process there. Any other members of the public like to comment?
Sandra, could you clarify, recently there's the ministerial approval process for second units, and could you clarify to what level the town has for design review and massing, or what level we no longer have? If you could just clarify that.
So before you do that, I'd just like to invite, I want to finish the public comment part, and then we'll have Sandra do that. Any other members of the public?
Hi, Lloyd Penrod, 2910 Lincoln. Under the old rule, you could go 20-foot max. So if you started out with, say, nine-foot for the existing ceiling height in the garage, you had 11 feet to work with, and it gave you more usable space. So this seems to restrict that a bit. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? I'm going to close the public hearing, so that's it for public comment. Now I'll invite Sandra to answer the town manager's question about clarification of what has changed with the mandate from the state and what we still have as discretionary decision-making.
So I would refer you back to ordinance 17-459 that was adopted in April, and that sets forth the minimum standards to convert an area within an existing dwelling to a second dwelling, or to build a new dwelling on a property that meets minimum square footage standards. And that is done administratively and staffed, after staff determines that it meets all of the minimum standards. I heard some concern as to, well, the roof pitch would be inconsistent with the main dwelling, but one of the requirements is that the design of the second dwelling shall be substantially similar to the primary residential unit on the lot and the architectural style of adjacent residences. And one thing we would look at would be the roof pitch that, that is used. And a similar roof pitch, maybe slightly higher roof pitch would satisfy that standard, but something that varies greatly from that wouldn't. So there is some subjectivity in reviewing that standard, but staff would, staff would look at, at all of the conditions and determine whether it meets the standard or not.
Right, but could you also clarify that under the new law, it would not necessarily be posted for a public hearing, or what process?
Right, and correct. And so that, that's staff review, that's done at staff level without a public hearing, without notice, but there is a provision in this ordinance that we would provide 300-foot courtesy notice to neighbors, let them know that the staff decision was being made because it met all of the elements of the code.
Are you trying to get at, Steve, that the state has taken away the, the authority for us to regulate that, and it would happen ministerially if we did not have something like this in place?
I think everybody, correct. I think everybody needs to understand that part of the response that staff is responding to was earlier neighbor concerns about this 20-foot wall, our side building being built right on the five-foot setback that state law would now allow. So how do we reduce massing? So certainly there's those complications, but I do want to make it real clear that the state has taken away, so when you're thinking this is going to go through the typical design review process and public hearing, it's not. And that's why we're trying to, to ensure flexibility, but some guidelines, because it's not going to be subject to noticing for a public hearing all the neighbors around. It's going to come in, if it meets the minimum requirements according to the state, they're going to get a building permit. So I just want, that, that's why we're trying to address what some residents brought forward as a concern about this thing being built right next to their property line. So I just want...
Your point being, the state has now said it can be 28 feet high unless local ordinance speaks to it differently, and you're proposing 24 feet maximum. Is that accurate?
The state law actually changes the required or minimum setbacks that the town can impose, but it still reserves the authority to impose height requirements. So in this case, if there is, for a conversion of an existing garage, town can't require any setback, actually, if it's still there and it's not going onto a second story. If it's a second story above it, can't require more than five, but it still allows for imposing height restrictions unrelated to the setback.
So just to try to be clear, the state has said anyone can build a second story above their garage. The local jurisdiction can still regulate how high that second story can go?
Right. Within the building code requirements for second stories.
And this would basically be the very minimum height and minimum livable space height inside that's allowed by state law right now?
Correct. The minimum habitable indoor space height.
Okay. So with that, further conversation. Vice Mayor?
Yes, could you please clarify for me, Sandra? It sounded to me when we were looking at the schematic of what the, what the five-foot, what would?
The plate height.
The plate height would look like. But I heard you talking about how many garages have lower ceilings inside than, than that. And would the, would that then mean that they could have a, a higher plate height because the, the ceiling of the garage was lower? No?
I raised that to indicate we may see total height less than 24 feet, where that first-floor height doesn't reach the maximum of 10 feet. But it wouldn't affect the allowance of a second-floor plate height of five feet, because that's measured from floor assembly to roof assembly.
I see. So the, the floor assembly would have to be at five feet?
Yes.
I see.
If no other questions of staff, discussion on this item. Councilmember Norman?
Not ready yet, sorry.
Councilmember Durham? I know I never get to you this quickly.
I know. I have notes, I just don't know how to put them in words, but I don't, I, I, I don't understa, I'm not a design person, I'm not an architect, so I have to respect and honor what you present to me and the discussions that we have. The state's mandated certain things, and it's my understanding we're trying to create something for all the neighbors. I, I just, I, I don't see the issue here, maybe I'm missing something. I mean, I, I don't see where we're asking buildings to blend in. I live in Old Town. I've yet to see a house that looks like mine, or my neighbor's, or the one next to them, or the one next to them. So the fact that we're asking anybody to blend in and going to create this community of mismatched items is confusing to me. I, I'm going to leave the design disaster to your, over the, over-the-desk qualifications, because I just don't see it in this community. I, 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 given what you presented and what we've talked about, it seems absolutely fair to me, so I'm fine with it.
Thank you. Councilmember Norman?
And I, I echo Councilmember Durham in that this is certainly way outside my wheelhouse, but I do think that having a restriction that, in a number of cases, might make a seven-and-a-half-foot ceiling and five-foot perimeter walls might be overly restrictive. So I'm, I guess my question is, is there a way to get to the same outcome but a different way and say, your building can be 24 feet tall, it doesn't matter how you get there, it's just 24 feet or 26 feet? Because I do think it would be really difficult to live in a home where the highest ceiling was seven and a half feet and the walls were five, and I think that would not drive that as a potential housing unit.
So Sandra, just to follow up on that, there seems to be a little confusion about the flexibility, if there is any, of how low the garage ceiling can go to allow for the floor of the second level to be lower and therefore having more space before you get to the roof. Is that not possible?
No, that is not possible. We look at each floor individually, and this establishes the second-floor ceiling height. What do I want to say? I think that when you live in this type of environment, you decide to put dressers and furniture in those locations, and for the, to the taller gable-end walls, that's where you're able to put your kitchens and cabinets and your bathrooms, so you're able to maximize the space. I can say that for many years I lived in a structure like this, but I was in my twenties and it was kind of fun. So it's not intended to meet all housing needs, but it will meet some housing needs, and there are ways to make the indoor space very usable. It is the minimum necessary, though, so, so there are constraints there. And I'll say that contractors don't like these rules, because now they have to do a custom five-foot wall assembly versus your standard eight or nine foot, so it adds some difficulty and cost there. But it is possible, and it is possible to have a nice living space.
So if we, if we just went with the 28 feet, like in our regular ordinance, if we went with the 20, yeah, a two-story garage could, could be 24? Under current ordinances, how tall can a two-story garage be?
It can be 20-foot to plate height, 28 feet overall.
Okay. So if we just went to 28 feet for the garage, is there a way to craft an ordinance that says maximum 28, but, you know, less preferred? Or does that get into the administrative versus?
Well, I'll say these are tricky design issues, and I'm not an expert either. I turned to architect Denton on the ZDRB, who constructs buildings and spaces, and this was really his recommendation to, to deal with that massing, that when we're dealing with tall detached structures, five feet from property lines, you really want to pull that, the, the height down, the wall height. And one and a half story is something that can be achieved. So that's the approach we took with the five-foot plate height, and then the, the frame, roof framing comes in as it can to meet that standard. I'm not sure what else to bring you if it's different from that.
So back to more discussion, I could be okay with something like eight feet or eight and a half feet. I just don't know about seven and a half feet as the highest point in your home.
So the 24 feet is somewhat arbitrary? Is that fair to say? That's the lowest you can go, but there is any number between 24 and 28 that can be considered here? Is that accurate?
Yes, yes.
To Councilmember Norman's point. Okay. Councilmember Mueller?
Okay, I think I understand this. First, I'd like to say that I, I think it's important that, you know, given that we are putting in what we need to, to fit the mandates of this new state ordinance, which I think we all are in agreement with, I think we also have to be very cognizant of, of the neighbors in the surrounding area. I think this is a pretty minimal thing to do to really make the totality of the individual who's building it, as well as the neighbors, kind of have the best solution. I'm also not an architect or design specialist, but I do watch a lot of home and garden television, so let me tell you about that. There, they have a show on there called These Small Homes, and given that, you know, maybe one of the smallest garages is going to be 10 by 20 feet, that means the second story is like 200 square feet. It's not much, and it's just like you described, but it is very livable, and I've seen them kind of craft how they put stuff in there. So it's going to be some challenges, we, we all know that, and it's not going to be for everybody, but it still will be a unit. And I personally have seen ways that you can be very creative with how you create that space. So I'm okay with a 24-foot maximum height. If we really run into a lot of problems as you're moving ahead and doing these things, we can always come back. I'd rather, and change it then. I'd rather not have something higher in now and have to reverse that when other things have been built to a higher standard. So I'm okay with the way it is now, and best of luck when you're doing all your reviews.
Thank you. Before Vice Mayor, another math question for you, Sandra. 26 feet would give nine and a half ceiling height in the second level, correct? You're adding two feet?
Yes.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Because I just, I, even though, you know, if, if the only intent were to rent, rent it to 20-year-olds, I could understand, because 20, 20-year-olds can deal with those kinds of things. But I, I think it, if it is so restrictive, so let me ask you this, if it's 26 feet, would then the massing still only be five feet, so that the floor would still only be five feet from the, from the ceiling? I mean, seven and a half?
I can't really answer, because there's not one formula that applies to all structures. It depends on whether we're dealing with 10-by-20 or 20-by-20 for the garage, for the, for the floor, and what type of roof pitch we're looking at, and what roof pitch is necessary to reach the seven and a half. So there are variables involved to do that.
So, but at 26 feet, if the...
It makes it more likely that you can have a higher ceiling inside. But I can't tell you exactly what all those numbers add up to.
I see. Well, if we could go to 26 feet, I think I could support it, but I just do feel that it's a really tiny space with a really difficult time. My husband couldn't, couldn't even walk in there, he'd be hitting his head. So I just, not that he's taller than seven feet, but, you know, on the size of talking. And we've stayed in some places like that from time to time, and it's not fun. Anyway, I, I think if we could go to 26 feet, I could live with eight feet inside, you know, for, by, with, by the pitch of the ceiling. But I, I don't think I can support 24 feet.
Thank you. I'm a little concerned about this as well. I'm not totally comfortable with it. I've been in these types of rooms. You see a lot of bed and breakfasts, bed and breakfasts that were built in very old standards with very slanted roofs that do create challenges. Yes, it can be done, but I feel like it's a little bit... Yes, it can be done, but I feel like it's a little bit on the extreme side. That's why I asked about the calculations for 26 feet. I'm also very sensitive to massing this close to the rear setback. I'm not a fan of what the state has done to us, to take away that local decision-making authority. But the reason I asked about the other ordinance that does protect privacy for the neighbors, that was one of my biggest concerns about going to the full second story within the new state setback allowances. So I would modify this as well. I think 26 feet allows for reasonable room height. Again, these are not meant to be for every single person in all conditions. A renter is going to need to have the type of, you know, understanding that these are going to be limited spaces. They'll be even more affordable because they will be limited sizes. We have multi-family buildings in town with very small square footage, and it doesn't meet everyone's needs, but it does meet some needs. Instead of saying no to this entirely, I would modify it to 26 feet. That would be my proposal for consideration by the council. Again, it has some limits, but I think it's a little more reasonable. If it can get to be as high as nine-and-a-half or nine feet inside, at least in the center, you have room for reasonable comfort in moving around the space. The edges are going to be limited, but if you rent or purchase that, you know those limitations. So those are my thoughts right now. So I'm throwing out the idea of modifying the ordinance as it's written to 26 feet. See if the council has thoughts on that. Councilmember Dorman?
I agree with the concept. I'm wondering if the modification, rather than being in the gross height, which affects the massing, should be in the ceiling height, which is what I hear the concern about. And perhaps that would put it at 25 feet or 25-and-a-half feet. If we, like, maybe ask staff to do some math and find out where we hit the sweet spot of ceiling height versus massing, but I am on board with some sort of modification.
Councilmember Dorman?
I'm fine with the modification.
Councilmember Mueller?
I agree with Councilmember Dorman. Instead of, since we will acknowledge that you can't do the math without doing the math first, that I would like to see, before we made a final decision, using your same minimum that I think you used before, which was, if I'm correct, a 10 by 20 side garage. Instead of the 24, if we go up to, so seven-and-a-half, we go to eight feet, what would that, then how would that affect the plate height, or the pitch of the roof? I would like to see that.
Okay.
Vice Mayor, any further thoughts?
Well, I'm glad that, you know, we're talking this through because I'd rather come back to us, something come back to us that we can all get behind.
Thanks. So Town Manager's leaning forward.
Well, just trying to do a little bit of evaluation. I mean, there's a couple things. One is, if we do nothing, which is always one alternative the council has, then during the immediacy, you need to be aware that something with 20-foot walls, eight feet. But I think what we need to look at, and I'm glad to hear the conversation change also to the plate wall height, because if you're really looking at the livability of the unit as some of the speakers talked about, not only is the total height important, but that going from potentially five to even five-and-a-half or six foot with the pitch will improve the overall livability. So you're all, what I'm sensing is deference. We could go back and redo that and then try to do that, but you just need to be aware that applications that come in in the time being will be accepted and processed under our current 20-foot, 20-foot height, and then the roof would go on. So I'm just, that's what we were trying to address. But I also think we hear and support your goal of trying to achieve both neighborhood balance and then viability of the living unit that we're creating, if I'm hearing what I'm sensing from the council.
So shall we, what would you like in terms of action? Shall we postpone?
I need to ask Sandra if she could do the math.
Well, I just did the math while Steve was talking, so...
Oh, good. Okay.
With a six-and-12 roof, which is what we see probably most often in Old Town, on a 10 by 20 garage, that gets us to only seven-and-a-half at peak of roof. So the only solution that you're looking at, raising the roof height doesn't really help because you're going to get a really steep roof that is incompatible with the neighborhood. It would be increasing the plate height from, let's say, five feet to seven feet. That's a way that it, you could achieve the indoor height of, well, that would make nine-and-a-half feet.
And you feel like, again, going back to the other ordinances that are on the books now, the exterior design and the aesthetics and the appropriateness all still have appropriate review and consideration at the administrative level. Is that true? In terms of the angles of roof, if we were to raise the plate height, one or two feet?
Yes. I think it would be important to raise the plate height to get the indoor ceiling height that you're looking at and be able to maintain the roof pitches that are common to this town. Otherwise, by raising overall height, we wouldn't achieve what we want.
Got it. So I would propose that we modify this to have the plate height be seven feet instead of five. I think that's the only change that we're talking about making. So with that modification, is there any further discussion? Councilmember Dorman?
And if the plate height were to go to seven, what would be the total height of the building?
We're looking at 10 and 1 and 7 and 1/2. So let's say it's 19 feet, so for the very smallest of garages, you'd be well below that, but you want to keep a higher limit for the 10 by 20 garage.
So would 26 work? Or would the ordinance just say the plate height cannot exceed seven?
24 probably works. I'd need a second to run the numbers on that. That'll get us an additional five feet, so that's five.
Do you want Steve to talk again for a minute or two? I know he has it in him.
So it'd be 12 plus 1 plus 10 is, see, that's 23 feet, I think, is feasible for the 10 by 20. So I think the 24-foot overall is still the number to go with.
Yeah, because that's 23.
It's just increasing the plate height to seven.
The key is the plate height, not the overall massing, to get the livability factor higher.
Yes.
So if a seven-foot plate height may be satisfying the council's concerns. Councilmember Dorman?
And the seven-foot plate height puts the ceiling at about nine feet?
That's what you said.
Right.
Well, it's sloping from seven to nine-and-a-half.
Nine-and-a-half down to seven, yeah.
Staff, respond to that question. So just for clarity, so one person's talking. You said, what was the answer?
Increasing plate height from five to seven with a six-and-12 roof on a 10 by 20 garage takes ceiling height to nine-and-a-half for the peak of the roof, and then lower on each side.
Certainly higher than five feet, somewhere in the seven-foot range, depending on the exact unit. Councilmember Dorm, do you have any further comment? Vice Mayor, any further comment? Councilmember Mueller?
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 17-462, an ordinance of the town of Yountville, amending Yountville Municipal Code Title 18, Chapter 18.36, Section 18.36.020 dot capital B dot four, building height for a second residential unit above a detached garage. And let me quickly go to the section under Section 1, Item 4, Number C, Number 1A, and change not, shall not exceed five to shall not exceed seven.
Are you good with that?
Yes.
Being the only location of that change?
That's it.
Okay. Did you enter your motion electronically?
Done.
Is there a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Please cast your vote to win the screen pops up. That passes unanimously. Thank you, and thank you for the discussion. Thank you for the public feedback and the staff's willingness to do math very quickly. Appreciate that. Okay, those are our two public hearings. We're going to move on to our administrative regular items, and as I mentioned earlier, we're going to start with Item 13B, which is the second reading and adoption, potential adoption of the rental registration program.
Thank you, council and mayor. For this evening is a second reading and adoption of ordinance number 17460, which would add Chapter 8.08 to Title 8 of the Yountville Municipal Code and would establish the rental registration program. Now, at the town council meeting held on April 4th of 2017, the town council introduced and waived the reading of ordinance 17460 that established the program that included a provision of health and safety inspections. However, on April 18th, during the second hearing, the town council removed the portions of the ordinance, which required a health and safety inspection every two years. The revised ordinance was introduced, and the reading was waived by the town council on a 3-2 vote. Following the meeting, a red line version of the ordinance, a frequently asked question sheet, and a draft registration form were shared with everyone who provided their contact info during that meeting. As a responsive additional public interest, a Q and A session was held at Yountville Town Hall on May 23rd. Those that submitted their contact info were invited to this, as well as it being published, advertised in the Yountville Sun. There were about four attendees there at the Q and A session. A copy of the ordinance was distributed there at the meeting, along with the same frequently asked question sheet and the draft application. They were also included in the agenda packet for this evening. The ordinance is now before the town council for a second reading. The ordinance before you has removed the, every portion of the ordinance that has to do with health and safety inspections, and so now it's very similar to what is already done in Calistoga, where it's, and it's very similar to the town's current practice of having home occupation permits, if you are conducting business in a residence. So if you have any questions, staff is here.
Question to the staff report. Councilmember Dorman?
Thank you. The only question I have, and this is for the town attorney, is do we need to define rental unit permit, or is it just understood that that's what it's all about? Similar to the hokey pokey, but different.
I do not believe that a separate definition for that is needed in order for the ordinance to be enforceable.
Any other questions in the staff report? Before I invite public comment on this item, I want to recognize that the council did receive several emails, letters of, or emails of support came in from Larry and Gail Knapp, Sally and Fran Mazzola, Carl Johnson and Angie Johnson. Letters of opposition came in from Christine Palace, Peter Jacobson, Diane Bartholomew, Lloyd Penrod, and Jill Kanelakis. So with that, would anyone else or those individual authors like to speak on this item? I know you're out there. Yes. Welcome.
Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
And council members.
I'm Barbara Allen, 6699 Jefferson Street. I have a question. I really don't understand why the purpose is served by the proposed new regulation regarding rental residential properties in Yountville. Why do we need rental property owners to register in Town Hall and pay an $85 annual tax? I fail to see the need for the proposed regulations, and maybe somebody can provide rational answers here for me. About three months ago, I first heard at a public ZDRB meeting, a proposal to change the minimum period for residential rental from one month to three months. I'm a board meeting, I'm a board member of the ZDRB. This suggestion was put forward by another board member who happens to be a renter. It was then voted on and approved 4 to 1 by the full board, with my vote being the only one opposed it. Given that at least three of the five board members are either renters or property owner, rental property owners, our vote struck me as being somewhat tainted by a conflict of interest, and I think the proposal should not have been allowed to stand. My husband and I own rental property in Yountville, so the proposed increase from one to three months got my attention. But our rentals are on yearly basis and would not have been impacted by the proposed change. It was several weeks later I next heard about possible changes in these regulations. The proposals for making changes in the rental regulation had morphed from simply increasing the minimum time period to a new proposal that would include a requirement to register the rental property, to pay $85 annual tax, and to have the property inspected. I was quite stunned by these developments. In my view, it is fair to say that not all landlords are bad people who prey on their helpless tenants. I could share with you a number of stories about tenants who have left our rentals in the total mess, in some cases require repairs, cost thousands of dollars. I won't bore you with the details of these sad stories. It suffice to say, there are two sides to the landlord-tenant dispute we all hear about from time to time. Yountville landlords are not, to my knowledge, a group of nasty, morally bankrupt people that our Town Hall needs to bring under control by imposing more regulations beyond those already in place. Also, I should keep, we should all keep in mind, the vast majority of landlord-tenant transactions are governed by standard leases or rental agreements that can be enforced through legal procedures. I submit that we do not need more rules, no more, no additional taxes to keep this segment of our local community function properly. In closing, I must confess that I'm not thrilled about being summoned to the Town Hall and take a mock shot for my reservation, for my registration. It does not appeal to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Welcome.
Don Judah, I own the property at 1885...
If you could raise that mic up just a little bit, Don, thank you.
1885 Columbarn. I appreciate being sent the information with the change of the ordinance and the red line, and I missed the meeting in the afternoon that was invited to. I appreciate that, too. But I did write a letter back asking about striking another paragraph, and Stephen Rogers did respond immediately and told me that that had already been removed. So I appreciate the inspection component of this ordinance being completely removed because it was just too big of an overreach for me. However, I still feel like this is like singling out people who rent property and saying, "You're going to pay the price to solve another problem," that problem being these short-term rentals that go on in Yountville. And I was just recently looking at, in the county register, looking at a property that has my name on it, and it has exemption right underneath it, for personal exemption for owner-occupied property. That would be a very simple way in the town of Yountville to identify all those properties that have that exemption. There are people living in it that own those properties. They're not renting them. Otherwise, it wouldn't have an exemption. So I think there's another way, perhaps, to identify these rentals that are going on that are short-term, other than taking a group of people who are landlords, and I've been renting this property with the exception of two years, for over 25 years. I'd be happy to fill out your application and send it to you every year. I'm not happy about sending you $85 to tell you this. So that's my last gripe about this ordinance. I think it's gone too far. I appreciate what you removed from it, but I really think this is, again, something else. Or perhaps, maybe we could make a concession. How about I pay you $85 one time that I'm renting it, and I'll send you a voucher every year that says, "I'm still renting it"? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Ms. Reeves?
Pam Reeves, sixty-eight eighty-seven Jefferson Street. I also echo the last speaker's appreciation of removing the inspection component of the proposed ordinance, but I feel like this ordinance, as it stands now, has the same fault that we already have means of enforcement against short-term illegal rents. We also have resident complaints which can be registered. I don't understand how registering all the people who, who don't do it illegally is going to help us find out the ones who are doing it illegally. If that's the real reason for having this registry, then it's not going to work. The people who are doing it illegally are going to do it still illegally without this registry, and I feel like we already know, probably, if there've been complaints about short-term renting, we already know that. So we seem to have an enforcement officer in town now. Maybe his job should be to investigate those rentals which are not meeting the standards. I feel like we already have the tools necessary and that another fee to live in Yountville is not really warranted. This is an unnecessary expenditure of time and funds to accomplish, I think, very little, seeing as most of the people who have been doing long-term rentals are the ones who are going to register, and those who are not, aren't going to register. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment?
Hi. Absentee owners. Look on the assessment roll for absentee owners. Take it from that standpoint. Assign somebody a project where they can compare that and do a walk-by of the property. How many of them can there be? I think that's a good standpoint to just do a check from time to time, especially as we get into the busy summer season, as to where these potential illegal rentals could be. I echo what the last couple of citizens have said about long-term, you know, rental owners like myself, we work hard to keep the rents in line. I never go to the market online. We haven't had a vacancy in years. We've had turnover, but we haven't had a vacancy. And the reason for it is because the people who we've, who we've rented to primarily, well, always workforce housing, always people who've worked in and around Yountville have been, hey, great place to live, we work with you, haven't had any problems yet on it in the last five years, knocking away.
Could you just give our town clerk your name for the record on this item?
Felix Flynn, sixty-seven twelve Washington Street, Yountville, California, nine four five nine nine. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. Anyone else? Last chance. Okay. I'll return the discussion to the council. A volunteer, or shall I choose again? Councilmember Moller.
Well, this is our, so this is the, the second reading of our ordinance. This is correct, right?
Correct.
So I think that there's some people that, you know, there might be some confusion about what this is because at pretty much the same time, we had ordinances that we were passing regarding accessory dwelling units. We also had this rental registration ordinance, and so I've seen some people kind of confuse the two a little bit. And the rental registration ordinance still has, you can only rent for a one-month minimum. Correct. Okay. And the, the other ordinance, which we're not talking about, which is, has been passed as accessory dwelling unit, that has the three-month minimum, and the two don't cross.
Ninety days for new garage, second dwellings.
Oh, ninety days instead of, thank you, three months. I wrote down three months, but I said, didn't say that. So I want to kind of make that clear, that that's really the difference. Also, we currently, like, I have a business in town, and I can tell you, it's kind of a unique specialty business, and nobody ever comes to my house. It's always on the, on the telephone. And we have a, a business license for anybody who runs in kind of business with their house. And what is that business license?
Home business occupation permit.
Yes. What's the cost of that, or fee? I just don't recall. Is it?
I think it's twenty-nine for the home occupation and fifty for the business license.
Fifty for the business. So we're asking for basically an eighty-five-dollar fee here, which is going to require quite a bit of, a little more paperwork than I have to fill out for my business license, which is just a piece of paper, I can guarantee you, but I'm happy to do it. And so, and it's also going to generate a rental registration number then that people can use in their advertising. So, and that's going to be eighty-five. So it's thirty-five dollars more than just a standard business license. And in my opinion, renting a property is a business in town, especially when it comes to dwellings. I think that this is something that we, we need to try. I think that we, there's several reasons we're doing it, to know really where our rentals are. Sometimes we do have to contact the landlord, and when we have a piece of paper.
Sorry, Mr. Flynn. I'm sorry, it's a distraction for you to be talking that loudly. If you would please respect our council's comments. Thank you.
So instead of, you know, having everybody run down and look at county records and all that, it's going to be right here, and we, if we need to notify property owners, which we do on occasion, because we do have other ordinances that we do have to make notification of, we will have all that documentation here. We also will be able to see on our Airbnb sites if they're using their rental registration number. So I, I think there's a lot of pieces of this. The majority of what I think I hear is concerned is eighty-five dollars. And I may not be interpreting everybody's view of that, but I, that comes across in every complaint that I receive. I also receive so many other letters and emails and phone calls in support of this. One of the things that we're trying to do, maybe when we haven't got it right, is really protect the fabric of our neighborhoods and really be able to let people know where the rentals are, if, if there are a problem. So, you know, I think there's a lot of things in here that make this desirable with what the council is trying to do right now, and I support it in the affirmative, like I did the first reading. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Dormin?
I agree with Councilmember Moller, and I think she looked at my notes, so I think that was well said, and I agree. I look at this as a business license, and a, a local government needs to know what businesses are within its jurisdiction and may need to notify those businesses. And I, I think we got derailed by calling it maybe a rental registration. Maybe we got derailed by speaking about it in term, in tandem with short-term rentals, but to me, it is a business license.
Councilmember Durham?
I'm glad you two took very good notes, because I agree completely.
Vice Mayor.
I was not persuaded the first time this came before us, and I am not persuaded now. I cannot support it.
Thank you. My comments have also, in large part, already been addressed. This, to me, has nothing to do with short-term rentals, and we know that Yountville doesn't allow short-term rentals. This is not in response to that. The eighty-five-dollar fee, I find interesting that has become a bone of contention, considering the substantial rental prices that people can achieve here in Yountville, several thousand dollars a month in some cases. This is to cover the cost of our administration of this, I think, very reasonable oversight of rental properties. We all have received a significant number of concerns and emails, either in person or in writing, about full-time residents that don't see anyone living in their neighborhoods anymore that they recognize because there are so many rental properties popping up. And it's a good and a bad problem. It's, it shows the desirability and the livability of Yountville, but it also has had an impact on our community. And I think this is a fair and appropriate step to controlling some of that, just by recognizing which properties are being turned into revenue generating opportunities. Not every property owner is choosing to monetize their, their homes. Some are, and we're not saying you can't. We're saying, we just want to identify who is doing it. We want to add another layer of protection for renters who may not understand what the legal protections are. I have, as I mentioned the first time we discussed this ordinance, I have firsthand knowledge in my immediate neighborhood in Washington Park of a property owner who has had long-term tenants, and much like some of the conditions that have been brought up here by people that I believe are very honorable and fair landlords. But I have a neighbor who has chased out two couples in the last year and a half, unwilling to comply with homeowner requirements and responsibilities for protecting their tenants. So it does happen. I know we like to believe that we don't have people that are acting less than honorably, and we'd like to believe that's a few people. I don't see this as punitive towards the, the folks that are following the regulations. I think these are very reasonable requests, that we have a registry of rental properties in town. So I can support this. I certainly agree, and we heard loud and clear that the inspection piece was unnecessary and wasn't really achieving the intended outcome. We heard that very loud and clear, and so we removed that piece. I feel very comfortable with what we have presented before us tonight. So with that, if there's no further comment from the council, if a motion is to be offered.
I'll make a motion that we approve the town of Yountville ordinance number seventeen dash four sixty, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Yountville, adding chapter eight point zero eight to Title Eight of the Yountville Municipal Code regarding the rental registration program.
Is there a second on that item?
A second.
Please vote when your screen comes up. That passes with a four to one vote. Thank you very much, and thank you for the folks that sent their emails, as well as those of you that have attended tonight to share your thoughts. I think it's fair to say that we have listened to a lot of your concerns over the two meetings that we had about this item. We don't always come to total agreement, understandably, but we appreciate you participating in the dialogue. So thank you very much. So with that, we will move on to our next item, thirteen C, which is the Yountville Chamber of Commerce Professional Services Agreement. Now, we're going to this item before we go back to A.
Oh, okay. All right. Got it wrong.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Tonight before you is the requested renewal of a three-year professional services agreement between the town and the Yountville Chamber of Commerce. The town has had a longstanding relationship with the chamber for twenty-four years, dating back to nineteen ninety-three, for marketing and promotion, promotion services. The current contract expires on June twenty-seventeen, and we currently are paying two-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand for expenses associated with marketing promotion and the operation of the Visitor Information Center and website. Our existing agreement provides for an up to three percent CPI increase in the base years. The proposed new agreement continues that format, adjusts the base level to two-hundred-and-eighty-one-thousand, and then has three percent increases for the next two fiscal years. I do want to point out that over the last three years, the town has experienced strong tourism growth, setting new records in our tourism revenue, new record in TOT, transient occupancy tax collection exceeding six-point-eight million, and sales tax has been over one-point-two million in each of the past three years. We've had an opportunity to work with the Chamber of Commerce, and in, in short, I'm going to shorten my staff report, because you saw the direction in which the chamber is going in some of the activities. The contract continues in a similar format, but has been modified to reflect increasing activity on social media, increasing partnership with the TID, Visit Napa Valley, and a greater focus on community event and integration with residents. It also restructures the focus on special event production to special event marketing support. So rather than saying they must produce X and Y, they provide marketing support, and we are seeing a commitment from the chamber to focus with us on the residence bash, concerts in the park, moving in the park, and a broader extension to work on developing a locals program. With that, you saw an overview earlier today that kind of highlights the general direction. They do continue to be responsible for operating and staffing the Visitor Information Center and also providing a current up-to-date website. And then you've also seen the increased emphasis on social media. With that, the chamber executive director, Whitney Diver McAvoy, is still in the audience and would be able to take on any questions above and beyond what we've covered.
Thank you. Questions in the staff report? Any at this point? Seeing none, and since our town manager put our chamber CEO on the spot, is there anything you would like to add or comment on?
I feel like I addressed everything earlier. I just want to thank you again for your support and for staff support, and I feel like it's been a really great first year, and I'm really excited that we've made it through that, and we're going to do so many more great things coming up. And that's really exciting for me. So thank you for your faith and your commitment to the chamber and to our community. So thanks.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to comment on this item? Ms. Reeves?
Pam Reeves, sixty-eight eighty-seven Jefferson Street. I think I was on the council when we first gave money to the Chamber of Commerce, and that was at a time when Yountville was full of very small businesses, incapable of doing their own promotion, especially in a countrywide kind of way. And we actually had high and low seasons, which we barely have now. I, I feel like this idea that we're so happy we have such high tourism increases is a double-edged sword for residents. As much as I really thought the presentation by the chamber president was really exciting and really interesting, and I wish her all the best, I feel like the town's investment in the chamber needs to be reconsidered as far as how it's structured, that I feel like the town doesn't need any more promotion as far as the residents are concerned, and that I, I understand the, the interaction between the chamber and the residents is really important, and I think money well spent by the town to encourage that, to expand those programs, to make sure that residents and business interact more. Because as tourists see residents interacting and enjoying town, they enjoy town more. I, I fully support those kinds of programs and that kind of support of the chamber, but when it comes to flat-out promotional material or promoting Yountville further, or with this idea that there is no limit to how much we can absorb, I think that needs to be really discussed. I think that needs to be really discussed and really reevaluated because that's the number-one thing on people's lips. When is enough enough? And what is the tipping point? I think in the last couple of years, we're dangerously close to the tipping point, where it's not the Yountville we knew before, and that the golden goose is going to get tired, and that our problems with second home ownership, and those second homes are empty. All of those things are coming about because people visit more, and they think, "Oh, I'd love to live there," but not really. "I'll just live there a couple of weekends out of the year." But all of that stuff is connected, and we need to relook at what is our Town money spent on. It's fine if it's promoting interaction within the Town, but I question whether or not we need more PR.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing no one else, I'll invite further discussion by the council. We'll go back to Councilmember Doorman.
I am very happy to first thank you for your presentation. It was exciting and interesting. And I am the most excited about seeing some additional resident participation and resident programs. As far as the cost goes, my understanding, and I'm sure the Town Manager will correct me if I'm wrong, is we're starting at the base of where we left off last year, so there will not be, there's not a new floor. We're starting where we left off, and there'll be a 3%, up to a 3% CPI every year. Of that $40,000 will be for the lighting, for the Festival of Lights, which really, that's a pass-through to the Chamber. That's not really a payment to the Chamber. It's a payment to the Chamber for services rendered, but it's services we would have rendered from someone else. So that $40,000 to me comes off the top. So I am happy with it. I do understand, I mean, at my office hours, I talked to a number of people about the continued promotion of the Town, and I think it is a good question, how much can we take? But I also do think that as prices go up for what we are getting bang-for-all buck promotion-wise and the cost of providing the service of promotion, I think by starting where we're leaving off probably is a good thing to do for the next three years. I think that's very prudent. We'll see where it goes. And there's nothing to say that if we get 18 months or two years into it, we all live in the same town, we all work in the same town, we can all say, "Let's come back to the table, let's rethink this." You know, we're getting more social media. But, and I think another thing to think of is the welcome center comes out of this. And so no matter how people get here, I have to think that's a large expense also, and that benefits the Town once people get here. That's not calling them to us. That's that, once they're here, we help them get around. So those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham.
One of you can correct me if I'm wrong from the staff, but $140,000 a year, according to this, for the Chamber, and we're spending $220,000 on pickleball courts, correct? Approximately?
$240,000 for the Chamber marketing promotion agreement. You have $200,000 in your budget for...
$200,000 for the pickleball courts, $20,000 for the new outdoor equipment for the park.
Okay. So my point being is that we're... It's interesting to me, when we did the interviews for Envision Yountville, the number of people who stepped up and told us the reason they moved here is because they experienced Yountville three, five, two years ago as tourists, and now they choose to live here, whether they're retired or whether they're younger. And I think that's amazing, and I, you know, I meet plenty of people on the street who have chosen to live here for what Yountville is now and what we've become. And that's why I've lived here for 13 years, and I'll continue to live here. So I'm excited to hear about the participation, especially excited to hear about your discussion about the Festival of Lights. So I think that'll be good. And I, I'm very excited for it moving forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mueller.
I'm also, first I'd like to thank Whitney. I think you've done a great job this last year. I see a lot of new innovative changes coming. I think all that's very exciting. I like all of the electronic and social media thing you're doing. The only comment, I'd like to see a few less of these paper maps and paper tour things, and let's get that Yountville app up there. It's all on there, and there's even more, the art walk and all that. So I'd encourage you to push that with all of your other social media, electronic thing. You know, a lot of people, in my opinion, have a, you know, kind of a misconception about PR and spending money and, you know, what does it do? And I see in downturns in the economy, that's the first thing people want to cross off. "What is this? I don't understand it, let's get rid of this then." But, you know, it is critical. And, you know, if, even if we weren't doing this ourselves in the way we wanted to drive it, this whole valley is exploding with hotels and visitors. Just look at the numbers. I saw something the other day, and of all the visits to each one of the cities, we were kind of the lowest. So, I mean, some of the other cities even have greater number of visitors that are coming to them. This is the valley. This is what is very popular right now. Everybody's participated, with, of course, Yountville leading the way, of course. And, you know, this explosion of a destination, of everybody wants to be here. And I think that, I don't know how long this is going to continue, but we're not going to stop it. So I think we should control the conversation as we are doing here at the Chamber. And kudos to the new proposals to contribute to resident bashes and other things for the residents. I think that, I saw that in your vision statement, so kudos to that, too. So I'm very supportive of this, and great job.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
You know, excuse me. I think that we are also confronting a time when, excuse me. My allergies have been terrible this year. But we're confronting a time when we are almost built out, and there are many other luxury hotels coming online in other towns. So to me, the market will decide if we, you know, right now, we're the darling of the Napa Valley. And hopefully, I hope we remain that way for many years to come. But once the, you know, some of the other resort hotels are open, and it may have an impact on us. And I believe that we do have to keep putting our name out there. We depend on the TOT and the sales tax to support all of the activities that we provide for residents. And so I support the Chamber, and I support this, this new contract.
Thank you. I absolutely support what we're talking about right now. I think Whitney has done a great job of bringing the Chamber into kind of the next generation of service to the business community, along with your staff re-engaging our business community. And it really comes down to not just being business versus residence. And I know that some people feel like if we support our businesses, we're not supporting our residents. I completely disagree with that. By supporting business and supporting what brings people here and brings their revenue here, we are able to support our residents better than any other community that I'm aware of. I go on vacation and enjoy myself and come back, not wishing I lived somewhere else because they were a better community, but because I want to come back here and experience the people and the businesses that we have here and the neighborhoods that we have here. We would not have the recreational opportunities. We would not have the beautiful park system. We would not have many of the amenities that we enjoy each and every day were it not for a healthy business industry. A large part of that falls in the hands of the Board of Directors and the CEO and the staff and the volunteers at our Chamber. So with that, there's a cost associated, absolutely. When we want to be an elite community, an elite destination, we need to stay proactive, we need to be relevant, and we need to continue to generate opportunities that allow us to serve our community, whether it be the business community or, more importantly, our resident community. That priority has clearly been heard by the Chamber and the Board based on the priorities that you've set out and your goals for this next year and beyond. So I think it's absolutely appropriate that we continue to support and be a very close partner with our Chamber. Yes, Yountville has evolved from what it was like 25 years ago. And many of the stories we hear about 25 and more years ago were about what we'd like to see this community turn into, rather than it stagnating. And we don't have to look very far away from Yountville. We can look a few miles in the north and the south to see what happens when you either sit back and think that everything is good and it doesn't take any effort and investment, or if you just think there aren't other pressures happening externally that are going to impact us. So as the Vice Mayor has said, we want to stay at the top of our game from a resident standpoint as well as a business standpoint. I think supporting the Chamber of Commerce is a very strong and appropriate way to do that. So those are my comments. Is there a motion to be had on the item before us?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 17-3412, approving a professional services agreement between the Town of Yountville and the Yountville Chamber of Commerce for the provision of marketing and promotional services and operation of Visitor Information Center, and authorize the Town Manager to sign the agreement from July 1st, 2017 through June 30th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Please cast your vote. That passes unanimously. Thank you. Congratulations. Continue the work. Okay, we're going to now go back to our first administrative regular item, Item 13A, which is our strategic plan framework.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'm going to try to do an abbreviated report since you've all lived this. Tonight before you is the formal adoption. If you may recall, in April, you held your final retreat on this topic and provided direction to move forward. Tonight is the formal adoption of your Town Council's strategic planning framework, and it's the result of multiple days of council, full-day retreats, three community public workshops, and an online survey. The results of the engagement were then shared with you all, and you all did something very remarkable and important with the community feedback. You changed your draft. I say that because so many people took the feedback with the expectation that there wouldn't be a thoughtful response. And that's not how you all took the feedback. And I say that because it takes a, it takes a lot to look at something, restructure it, and say, "Aha, that wasn't what we were intending, how the message was received." And as such, you rephrase your vision. We develop organizational values in partnership with the Town employees, and the council identified critical success factors that were necessary for us to be successful over the next five-year planning horizon. I want to share first how we're going to use the strategic planning document. One, as you may recall, based on your staff template, we use the strategic plan that the council has previously adopted, and this one will be put in, and we will adapt it. And you will see how it shapes the actions and how many of the responses and projects. Also, it guides your budget and goal-setting. And staff has worked really hard based on the parallel paths that we were on, and I'm pleased to report that you will actually see the first interim report of how we were able to go in and use the feedback because we were participating with you. We heard. Budget initiatives will be connected to how they support one or more critical success factors. You all have used these to help prioritize what is important and how do you stay focused, given limited resources, including both funding, staff resources. We will use these in newsletters, website, and other communication tools and updates. With that, I know the mayor has a prompt, and if you would like to read the council vision statement and the six critical success factors, that will conclude my staff report.
Very good. Yes, and this will be posted for all to see and to keep us all basically on track with what we have worked on for the last several weeks, months. So the vision, as we have identified, Yountville, building community, welcoming all, embracing our small town. And "Town" stands for treasured history, outstanding people, world-class experiences, and natural beauty. Our mission statement for Yountville employees, connected to our community, delivering exceptional public services for our residents, supporting a world-class destination with heart. And "heart," the organizational values for "heart" are hard-working, ethical, adaptable, respectful, and teamwork. And I know that the council agrees that our Town staff lives that every day, and it was our pleasure to put that down in writing. Our critical success factors, exceptional Town services and staff, engaged residents, responsible fiscal policy, quality of life, premier destination, and visionary leadership. And we did spend several hours discussing and crafting, and in some cases, changing some of the original goals and visions that we had as a council. To the Town Manager's point, we really did receive some very positive feedback and some good creative thinking from our public process when we were creating this strategic plan. So I'm very satisfied with the outcome. I'm always a little bit skeptical when we go into the strategic sessions on what is going to come out of it and how do we execute that. So it's not just a document that we put on the wall and forget about it, but we need to stay true to it and live it. And we've already identified in our upcoming budget how we are applying our strategic goals as it pertains to our revenue commitment. So it's been a very strong process, in my opinion. Would anyone in the public like to comment on the process? We've had very numerous times to do so already. So with that, I'll invite any further discussion from the council, or we can consider adoption of the Town Council's strategic plan.
I'd like to make that motion to adopt the 17-1211 2017 Strategic Plan Framework, approving the 2017 Town Council Strategic Plan Framework.
Now, we got our voting screen up a little prematurely there.
I was fast.
So can we have a verbal second on that?
Yeah. You still do your motion.
So Vice Mayor did make that motion. Do we need a second or not? I think we do. So would anyone like to verbally?
I'll make a second.
We have the voting screen already up, though, Michelle, that's my point.
Okay, do a verbal, and I'll select one.
So Councilmember Mueller did the verbal second, so please vote. That passes unanimously. No, you were just so excited about accepting the Town Council's strategic plan framework. Thank you very much. Okay, we're going to now go back to our regular agenda order, which is Item 13D, consideration of a letter of support for ACA 4, crafted by our Assembly Member, Cecily Aguirre Curry.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Briefly, this is a request... Briefly, this is a request from the Assemblymember staff for support. Her proposed legislation is to change the voter initiative, through a voter initiative, the voter approval level from the current two-thirds for affordable housing and public infrastructure. And if ACA 4 is passed by the legislature, it would need to go on the ballot in 2018 and then be voted upon by the residents to change the voter approval threshold. We're here tonight because under the current Town Council protocols, we have very limited authority by which we can endorse legislation. So it's at your direction and request as to whether you're interested in supporting this legislation. A sample draft letter is attached, and we would request your direction and authorization for the mayor, if you so approve, to send a such letter and make any minor adjustments to the format that you might like.
And I'll just add to the Town Manager's report that this is strongly supported by the League of California Cities, who actually has helped craft the language in ACA 4. They're very supportive of this idea. They've also noted that there are several North Bay jurisdictions that have already sent similar letters of support in to support ACA 4 and our Assemblymembers' efforts. And the affordable housing and public infrastructure focus, I think we can find direct nexus to what we have going on in Yountville and the Napa Valley. So that's additional feedback. Are there any questions of Town Manager's report on this item?
I do kind of have one question, which is I'm trying to...I know this is kind of a very broad-based, and this would be a general support that we're recommending that the voters then would finally have to approve because this would change part of the Constitution and the state. So my question is, when each bill would then come up under, once this got approved, like regarding affordable housing, I know we all support that, but I also support having some state funding for that instead of like something getting written like affordable housing to be paid for by the town instead of supported by the state. So I just want to get some clarification around that, you know? Each one of those bills would then be a separate voting?
There still needs to be a measure initiative presented through the regular process.
Right.
It's the threshold for approving such a measure as it relates to anything associated with affordable housing or infrastructure. It's still a vote of the people, absolutely. This would just allow for the threshold to go from two-thirds, which is, especially as seen in the state of California, extremely difficult to achieve even when there's much higher-than-majority support, that those types of initiatives would have a lower threshold, similar to what state school funding initiatives.
And other bonds. I understand that. I mean, I am supportive of that, but that's the one thing that keeps nagging at me is that, you know, if we move it down to 55% for affordable housing, my concern is it's going to be all these bills that say, you know, because I always want to put stuff in there that, you know, we want some state funding for this stuff. We don't want it just to be ours. So what was the discussion at California League around that? I have no problem for affordable housing, it just seems very general.
Well, it's...
How did they discuss that?
Yeah, so what this does is change the vote threshold for special taxes that would be placed on the local ballot by this council.
Okay, special taxes in the local ballot. All right, now I get it. I'm fine.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for that clarification.
Yes.
Any other questions, Councilmember Dorman?
But it would also allow, for example, the county to put a special tax on a local ballot.
That's correct.
It's not just municipalities.
That's correct.
Any member of the public like to comment on this? Okay. I think that's a critical clarification, and thank you, Gary, for making that clarification because we do have a history in, basically as a self-help county, to put forth priorities as we see them in Napa County. We certainly saw that with Measure T and the road maintenance tax, not waiting for, you know, statewide vote, and that's certainly benefited Napa County in the past. So I would see this as an extension of that type of effort. And this, I mean, we can't really speak to the individual pieces of legislation as much as we can speak to, these are priorities that we see that we would like our community to be able to support at a more reasonable threshold. Any further discussion on this item? Is there...I already asked the public, is there a motion to be had on this? Do we need a formal motion for approval? Okay. Okay, is there a motion? I will make that motion, that we authorize myself to sign this letter.
I'll second that emotion, I mean, that motion.
And that passes four to zero with an abstention. Thank you. And before we continue onto Item 13E, we will just take a five-minute recess, comfort break, and then we'll come right back. And we are back from our recess, so we are going to continue on with Item 13E, Envision Yountville Town Advisory Group appointments. Nathan?
Great. Quick, brief staff report beforehand. As the council knows, applications for the Envision Yountville Town Advisory Group opened on March 16th and ended on April 14th, and that recruitment ended with a total of 31 applications received. Staff provided an informational report to the Town Council on March 21st, and during that meeting, the council directed staff to assess how all of the applications were going to go. And then on May 2nd, staff provided a report to the council, and the council decided to interview every applicant. And interviews were then held at the Yountville Town Hall on May 19th, May 30th, May 31st, and June 2nd. Now, following the interviews, on June 6th, earlier today, the council met to discuss the ultimate makeup of the advisory group, and nine applicants were brought up for this evening to now be voted on as the official makeup of the group, along with two alternate members. These applicants are alphabetically Joel Brightigan, Verlin Chalmers, Boyd Dennington, Liz Hauer, Carl Johnson, Eric Knight, Whitney Diver-McAvoy, Davio Santos, and Susan Wickers, with PJ Hudson and Linnea Pena as alternates. So now, the council, it's now proposed that the council adopt Resolution 173413, which appoints these members to the group and establishes the Envision Yountville Town Advisory Group.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? I think it was fairly straightforward. We did spend an hour earlier today on this item.
Did you want to?
Questions about it? I just want to state, and I know we have a couple of members in the audience that were not on the list that Nathan just read, we had several candidates that we considered and deliberated on for quite a bit of time today. And it's always difficult, and this is one of the most awkward positions that we are put in when we're talking about friends and neighbors and trying to determine which of those friends and neighbors we feel are most appropriate to serve in a certain capacity. So while we have this proposal before us for final action right now, beyond the 11 names that we are going to vote on, we were very pleased with all of the applicants and the skill sets and their commitment to Yountville that was clearly evident through the interview process. We want to encourage everyone to continue in the public meeting process and the, what you'll, I'm sure you already know, quite lengthy and very thorough general plan process that's before us. So with that, if there's any further, Councilmember Mueller?
I have a question. I'd like to ask staff, were there any applicants where there were unusual situations that you'd like to address?
There was. Thank you for reminding me. One applicant that applied and interviewed received very strong comments and reception with the application and interview with Helen Thompson. However, she has notified town staff and the council that she will be relocating away from Yountville in July, and so she is therefore not being considered for this at this time, but is still, of course, invited to attend all of these public meetings.
Just one additional thing that I'll explain about the process that we went through. We used a combination of tools to reach our final decisions, or potentially final decisions. We used a system based on a wide variety of demographics. We were looking for as diverse committee as we could put together. In some cases, we had individuals that many of us ranked very highly, both from the interviews and also just knowing the commitment to the community and participation, things like how long you've lived here, whether it be short-term, long-term, whether you're a business owner, whether you're a renter or a property owner. We tried to put together a significant mix of those folks. So when we came across multiple names that may have fit the same set of demographics, we basically had to talk through and evaluate who we thought made the most sense to move forward with. So there are many applicants that were extremely qualified, and we just had to make a decision based on what mix we felt was the most appropriate. So, and that's an example of Helen Thompson, who was ranked very highly, but basically is disqualifying herself for no longer being a resident in the very near future. So with that, is there any further discussion prior to action?
Yes. If I could just ask Nathan to explain for those here and those watching, the roles of the alternates and how involved they will be.
Certainly. So the alternate members are very much just like the other nine members. They will be expected to come to every meeting, they'll be expected to do the homework assignments that are assigned, and will be expected to contribute just as much in the conversations that the group will have as regarding different policies of the general plan. They will not be voting members unless their vote is needed in order to make a quorum. So if, for some reason, there are less than five people in attendance, then the votes of the alternate members would be required in order to make quorum.
Now, only one of the, if there is a need for a single vote for a quorum, how are you choosing which of the two alternates would be included? Is that random selection or?
While that can be a decision made by the council, if you want to determine it, we could do it by drawing straws, which would be staff's recommendation of the two unless the council has another idea.
I would recommend it be random, like a drawing of the two names that are present.
Okay.
I don't know that we have to get that detail covered at the moment, but something to consider going forward, I think.
I'll purchase official straws for just that situation.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, Nathan, will you please explain the ultimate decision-makers?
Correct. So this Town Advisory Group, the key word there is advisory. The different discussions and decisions that'll be made there will simply be decisions that they then move on as recommendations to the Town Council. The actual policies that are adopted and incorporated as part of the general plan in this update will reside within the decisions of the Town Council. The advisory group will simply be making recommendations.
Thank you.
And they'll be working with the public meetings that we will be having, helping set the subject matter and the conversation, but then the general public is invited and encouraged to participate with the committee to set up the content of those elements as we go through the general plan.
Absolutely. The Town Advisory Group will be meeting at a minimum monthly, but there will also be several public workshops held at the community center, and for every one of those Town Advisory Group meetings as well, the public is encouraged and invited to attend, to be informed, and to make their opinions known based off the items that are discussed at each of those meetings.
And the advisory committee meetings will be public.
Yes.
And there will be a public comment time at each meeting, similar to what we do here. The committee will be the ones that have the dialogue and interaction, and that at some point during that meeting, there will be a time for any member of the public that's in the audience to share their thoughts, just like we do in this format here.
Yes, there will be public, agendized meetings held here in the, the regular meetings held here in the council chambers, with the occasional special meeting maybe in a different area of town in order to invite other members of the community that might not make it to Town Hall too often. But every single one of those will have public comment opportunities galore.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion or ready for a motion?
I hit the button.
Very good. And Michelle's asked us to verbalize that also. So Councilmember Mueller has...
Hit the button.
Moved the item. Is there...
And are you appointing the members?
Yes, we are, the motion is to appoint the members as presented by Nathan in his staff report.
Okay, thank you.
The members and the two alternates.
Yes. I will second the motion.
Thank you.
That passes unanimously. Thank you very much. And again, thanks to all the applicants and all of your interest. Hopefully, that interest will continue. We've had a lot of interviews. We have another set of interviews to consider right now. Next up is the Town of Yountville Community Foundation appointments. Is there a brief staff report before we?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, Mayor. The item before you is appointment to the new Yountville Community Foundation. Somewhat short staff report is that the council, back in January 2016, adopted a resolution creating the Yountville Community Foundation. Just as a reminder for people, since it's been a while since we've been back to that item, is the purpose of this foundation is to promote and raise funds to support community-based programming to benefit and serve the residents of the town, including but not limited to, I'm going to give a few examples, youth recreation and education programs, community-based wellness and enrichment programs, senior recreation, leisure, education programs and support services, parks and facility improvements, cultural arts programs such as the Public Art Walk, the gallery at the community hall, literary programs, visual and performing art programs, initiatives for events and programs staffed by community volunteers, and the potential for other community organizations to partner with the foundation. The composition of the body is ranging from no less than five to no more than nine members. There'll be five members of the public, and then there will be one director, providing there's a willing applicant from the following categories, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Commission, the Yountville Arts Commission, the Yountville Chamber of Commerce, and one director from a community partner organization. The town recruited back in January 2016 and received five applications. We then, as we got closer to this date, re-noticed to generate more applicants. We did not receive any new applications from the initial five. Those five were received from Eric Knight, Shannon McDermott, Pamela Zidell, Billy Hewitt, and Dottie Ramos. The Yountville Arts Commission has appointed Kim Cook to represent the Arts Commission. The Parks and Rec Advisory Commission considered it at their last meeting, but because there were only three members present, they continued that item to their July meeting, and so we'll hear back from them after that meeting. And then we just got word this evening from the chamber that the chamber is going to recommend Jessica Pennman to represent that body. The council interviewed all applicants earlier this evening and have submitted their vote tallies, which recommends all five of the residents for appointment, and I will just read the totals. Shannon McDermott was ranked as number one with 24 points. Pam Zidell was ranked second with 18. Eric Knight, third, with 14 points. Dottie Ramos, 11 points for number four. And Billy Hewitt... And Billy Hewitt, eight points for the fifth category. And with that, their terms will be staggered two and three-year terms, and we need to stagger them so all bought, all members don't go off at the same time. So at one of the beginning meetings, we will draw names and set those staggered terms. And the terms will be from August 1st, 27th to start, August 1st, 2017, and then we'll establish a two and three year after determining those staggered terms. And that concludes my staff report.
One question, just for clarification, on the, what I'll call kind of targeted directors, Yountville Arts Commission, Chamber of Commerce, et cetera. Are those going to require council approval, or is the recommendation as presented sufficient?
I was going to come back for the on-consent calendar with the Park and Rec Commission. Can we add?
Well, we haven't acted on any of them, yet.
Right. How do you want to do that, Steve?
Can we act on all three on June 20?
Yes. The question is whether or not those appointments can be made now or on June 20.
Well, we don't know one of them yet, the Park and Recs. We have two proposed names now. I'm thinking since we have no meetings happening before June 20, we could potentially take all three proposed names. Is that?
We have, we have five public members, Kim Cook from the chamber, and Jess learned tonight of Jessica Penman.
I'm talking about the Park and Rec, the chamber, and the Arts Commission names that we have not been given for formal consideration yet. Can we, do we need to act on them, one? And if we do, should they be put on the June 20 for consideration and formally put them on the committee?
The arts representative has been recommended for your consideration tonight. The only two that weren't in the staff report were Parks and Rec and the chamber. So we can bring those back under a consent item, unless the attorney says we can do something to accept future appointments.
No, I think that those recommendations should be made before they are appointed and approved.
I would, I would recommend that we take all three of those names and formally consider them at June 20, because this particular agenda item was listing the five that we interviewed today.
No, it says, and the confirmed.
I understand that, but we, we didn't vet them, so I just feel like we should have had an opportunity, if we were going to consider their names, to either have them present today or have the public comment on it. No?
They are, when you go back to your bylaws, if I can draw the council to those?
Thank you.
Those are designated?
I'm sorry, thank you. Those were designated from the body, and so...
From which body?
The, in other words, the Arts Commission nominee.
I understand that.
And then the Chamber of Commerce. When you created the initial bylaws for the foundation, five public members, and then as long as there was a willing participant, you identified those specific categories. So one member has to, could be a Park and Rec Advisory Commission member if willing to serve. If one isn't willing, then you will not have one from Park and Rec. Then the Arts Commission had this on a prior meeting, and Kim Cook, so I mean...
I understand all that, Steve. I'm saying, do we need to formally accept them, or have we already done that?
I believe you have already done that by your bylaws.
And Gary, do you agree with that?
I will have to go back and read the bylaws specifically.
So let's, let's say this. We're, we're voting on the five today that we interviewed today. If we, if Gary determines that we need to formally accept the three that are being presented, and it's not just enough to say, if there's somebody from Park and Rec, somebody from the Arts Commission, and somebody from the chamber, we may have already kind of pre-approved them, is my point. Is that correct?
That's what I'm agreeing with you, yes.
So if we don't have to bring back this for consideration on June 20, we won't. And they'll just automatically be filling those spots. And if no one from Parks and Rec is willing and able, then we'll deal with that vacancy when we deal with that vacancy.
And we can give you a verbal report on the results. So we'll, we're going to make the assumption as you said, and then we'll advise you if it's different.
Does that work?
And it can also go on consent.
Right. So with that, is there a motion to accept the five applicants as the town clerk has presented them?
Hit the button again. So moved.
I second.
Okay. Please vote. And again, it's always encouraging when we receive applications and are very pleased with all of the applicants. We're very satisfied, I think, as an entire council with the members to step forward. So, thank you all very much for that. And move now on to item 13G, which is the consideration of creating an ad hoc committee for the recent stated about considering local community projects.
Mayor, council, very briefly, this is a follow-up item to your prior budget workshop where some questions were asked about engaging the community, some follow-up on May 22 to the speaker series, where perhaps, how would we put a program together for the $500 small projects or others? I have to apologize to all of you, but since it was a very informal and loose conversation that the council had, I don't have a lot of structure with which to present you at this point. So I'm presenting it under the premise of, one, you had asked for some further opportunity to have a dialogue about this. So the first thing is, is there an interest in potentially doing something in this area? So that'd be your first consideration. And then if there is, would you like to establish an ad hoc committee to work on it, and then potentially bring back whatever their thought process was for further council action at a later time? So with that, I will defer quickly back to the council, as it's really an extension of your conversation of how you would like to proceed. And then staff will be prepared to help you discuss and formulate whatever it is you decide you'd like to do.
Okay, if anything. Okay. Councilor Dorman?
I am interested in whether we do it by committee, or we do something less formal, but I, I do appreciate Mayor Dunbar, what you said during our budget discussion, that there needs to be some sort of a process. And so I think this is a, I'm very happy to continue discussing it tonight and come up with something that works.
Councilor Dorman, you can tell me?
Yeah, what, one of the reasons that I believe in this is that we have seen a lot of activity, I think, from envision Yountville. It's been encouraging to see the, the people participating, but it's also been highly encouraging for all the new faces that we saw during the interview process as well. Unfortunately, some of them have left, because I think that we need to grab this opportunity and run forward with it. And I'll, I'll step up right now and say I'd be willing to be on that ad hoc committee. All I'm, my thought on this is, I've got office hours. I see the office hours with my ad in the paper as a form of letting people know. Once we all make sure we're clear on, all I want to do is make sure people know, I've met with people who don't know the whole process, or who don't know, God forbid, who's in charge of Parks and Recs, but it would be nice, I know, but it would be nice just to have a, you know, just one page to say, hey, you know, that's a great idea, or this is who you should talk to, or you should email this person, just as a means to, to continue riding what I see as a lot new involvement in this community as well. So that's my thought.
Any other thoughts, Councilor Mueller or Vice Mayor?
All agreement.
I'd be most happy to serve on that ad hoc committee, actually.
So I guess you're getting a response out of this, Steve, after all. So it sounds like we have at least three interested members. So if somebody would like to make a motion, and realize that this is not, this is basically an advisory ad hoc committee that's helping our residents learn the process of how to bring forward ideas, how to get them either vetted through the Park and Rec Commission, or any other avenue that's appropriate, and then consideration of funding as any potential project comes forward to the council.
And I also want to make sure that we all, that ad hoc committee, works with the town staff to make sure we put everything in the proper order and in the proper place, so that we're giving out the correct information as well, so.
I think there may be a place for some kind of regular update and informational report to the council on whatever discussions are happening at that level.
If I, right, if I could, following on that, the first thing that would happen is the two members of the council ad hoc would work with staff to figure out what it is we're putting together, bundling, create the report, the options, the idea, bring it back to the council for further discussion and vetting, because I could actually see this going in having several components. And I do have to say right now, you know, one of it could be information on how to access the existing processes. Second could be if you want to do something with a periodic small projects thing, and I'll leave it just generic or medium, what would that look like, and how do you set that all up? And then the third component would be at some point, there is no funding right now for this, other than the staff time and support to do this. Then once you get going, if there's a process, then that would be up for the council ultimately to come back. And it may be that you put the process together for future, you go through, find projects, and then find out what they are, and come back and put funding. But you're right, at this point, as the mayor said, this does not have a funding allocation. It's simply a way to, to better inform and come up with a structure to potentially guide the council towards a greater level of citizen involvement.
Well, that was really my point, is was brought up by Councilor Dorman, that, that I felt like there needed to be a structure for vetting of the ideas before there was money put to ideas that didn't exist yet. So I think this satisfies my concern about that, and I agree with Councilmember Durham that we want to continue to capture the energy and the creativity that has been enhanced. There was some there, there's more evident now through this process. Vice Mayor?
Well, I, I volunteered to be on the ad hoc committee, but I didn't realize that Councilmember Dorman had actually, that's what you were saying, so I'm going to withdraw my name from that.
Yeah, I believe Councilmember Dorman was the first to kind of bring this forward, which I appreciate. I would suggest for consideration, councilmembers Dorman and Durham, just because I want to make people say Dorman and Durham as often as possible, or Durham and Dorman, unless there's any other consideration.
I would be happy to serve, and thank you, Vice Mayor, I appreciate that.
So with that, I'll just propose that we do appoint councilmembers Durham and Dorman? Dorman and Durham? Whatever. Yeah, come up with that.
The Dohams.
Yeah.
You have to hit the button.
I don't know, do we have a button to push? Yeah, I'll move that we nominate those two. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you for that, and let the ideas be brought forth. I think an earlier public speaker in the beginning of tonight's meeting might be contacting the two of you.
He might already be having a discussion.
Yes. All right, staff informational report on rentals and usage of Yountville Community Center.
So just quickly, I've been working with Lisa, our community facilities manager, and we put together this recap report of data from about the past three years, and then some more recent data of just trending. And so that was presented in the report for your review. I'm not going to go into it in too much detail, but I hope that you do agree and see that we've had some really great progress over the last few years around programming at the community center, as well as rentals, and will continue to evolve as, as the market does as well. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for the informational report?
I just wanted to say, I think that it's, it was really interesting to see the growth, and thank you so much, Sam.
Thank you.
Good report.
And I want to give you my appreciation for balancing our direction to cost recover, as well as provide affordable, if not free, experiences for our community. I know we, we make it a little more challenging for you than you'd like, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, but I think we're making great progress, so thank you for those comments.
And I have photos to add to the tri-fold if you need.
Fantastic. I would love them.
Okay, thank you for that report. We'll move on to council meeting reports. Napa County Flood Control did meet today, introduced the first public hearing, the 2017-18 budget hearings, with potential adoption at June 20. Other specific, we have an A-Bag report, I believe, from the Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Go ahead, A-Bag?
Yes, so I attended the A-Bag General Assembly Business Meeting, in which they passed their budget and work program for the upcoming year. And also, I attended the Napa County Watershed Symposium on May 24, and that was very well attended, and there was lots of really interesting information and presentations. Once again, there was a really interesting one from the, ah, from Dr. Lisa McKelley, PhD, who runs, she's now the Executive Director of the Pepperwood Foundation, talking about the overall studies they've done of overall of our geographic area, and how we are trending more arid, despite the fact that we had a rainy year.
Thank you. Councilmember Durham, I'll invite you to give us a report on the Cannabis Roundtable.
So on May 31, the mayor and I attended a roundtable cannabis discussion with members of the county in all jurisdictions, except for one.
St. Helena.
St. Helena present. It was, all of, all the jurisdictions gave where they are today with cannabis. And then a extensive presentation from, excuse me, Platinum Advisors, Amy Jenkins and Paul Smith from R.C.R.C., gave a joint presentation, and it was, it was really good.
You really had to call it that?
Oh, I did. Oh, that was good. They worked together. But 64 pages worth of presentation, but it was amazing. We took copious notes. It's interesting, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, but pretty much given the trailer bill, we should all know where the state stands as of July, to where we can then, where we'll be moving and be at in January of 2018. So just a lot of really good information and helpful information in helping to make decisions moving forward. And then Mayor Canning and Supervisor Gregory will be the chairs, and the future meeting is yet to be determined.
Right. I think the only other addition I would make, did you remember something else?
No, no.
Oh, okay. We did have other members, many of them county representatives, but including Sheriff Robertson and other kind of stakeholders in this whole conversation, as you mentioned, the trailer bill, probably two-thirds of the presentation that, that was given by our main speakers, they kept saying, but this is potentially going to change when the trailer bill moves forward. There is, there is, I think, almost unanimous expectation that this trailer bill from the governor's office will be the end result of whatever Prop 64 turns into. So it was very interesting, actually. And thank you for that report. Alafco report from yesterday's meeting, Councilmember Mueller?
Yes, I was, took the oath of office as Alafco Commissioner yesterday, and the major item of discussion was the, there is going to be a delay, no surprise here, with the St. Helena MSR SOI, and there was some discussion about whether we should change consultants who, on that project. Also, on the work plan, we are discussing whether we should start the process with the city of Napa for annexation of a lot of small islands, that we call them, which is basically a, a little piece of the county that's totally encompassed by the city of Napa. There seems to be somewhere between 14 to 18 of those, so that might be in our future work plan, as we continue discussion. So that's all for now. So that's all for now.
Thank you. I also wanted to just give a, kind of a follow-up on a couple of events. One was the presentation by the Yountville Elementary School Subcommittee to the Board of Trustees. And I think I mentioned before that Samantha has played a very critical role in that as representative of the town, as well as a parent. And the timing of that conversation has been very delicate, because we did get to make our presentation before the Board of Trustees, just before some very significant issues have basically consumed the Board of Trustees. So we're not, you know, there isn't any timeliness to the ongoing dialogue. We left there feeling very confident. They are very supportive of the efforts, the Subcommittee and the sub-subcommittee of marketing effort that's moving forward. But we have to stay, I think, we're basically independently working to move forward now, because the Board of Trustees is pretty swamped with some of the other high-profile issues, including an effort to recall the Board of Trustees. But anyway, that, I just wanted to touch base again on that. I will be testifying before the Little Hoover Commission in Sacramento at the Capitol on June 22 regarding the review of facilities and service delivery at the Yountville Veterans Home. And I've, I'm about to submit my testimony in writing, and then I'll be there in person along with some other members of the Cal-Vet leadership. And I'll report back in July after that meeting. I also wanted to recognize all of our staff, Public Works, Samantha and Park and Rec, our commissioners, and everyone, including the council, that made for a very successful rededication of Veterans Memorial Park yesterday. It was a great pleasure to have the Cal-Vet Secretary, Dr. Inbasiani, as well as Congressman Mike Thompson as special guest speakers. We had a significant number of residents in the Veterans Home, as well as the rest of town, and three of our supervisors. So it was really well done, well received. We've, we've heard very, very glowing comments from everyone that's attended, so we should all be very proud of what, of the investment that we put into Veterans Memorial Park. And I don't remember, Samantha, have you presented to the council yet about the status of the sculpture, the commissioned sculpture?
I can give a short update if you'd like, but it will be, my goal is to bring the staff report to the council at the June 20 meeting, but that'll be based on getting some revised renderings from the artist that was chosen. But the committee did have a phone conversation with two artists who were both chosen to be in the running. And after that conversation, the committee decided to move forward with one of the artists specifically, but to ask for potentially some revisions, so that we're able to bring a couple of different renderings back to the council for review at the June 20 meeting, because of course, that would be your final decision to approve that, that project. I just did recall, though, two of you are not here at the June 20 meeting, so we may push to the July meeting, because I think it would be great to have the full council, which actually is good, because it gives me more time as well. So we'll look at that. I'll review it with Steve as well. And so the committee also went out and looked at potential sites in the park for the piece, and so those will also be coming to you at that time for review.
Yes, thank you very much. Seeing no other reports or comments, we'll move in, just about into our closed session. Gary, do we have any reportable action expected out of our two closed session items?
No.
No, we do not. So with that, we're about to go into closed session. We'll come out of closed session to adjourn to our regular meeting on Tuesday, June 20 at 6:00 PM. And with that, we will go into closed session. So general public, thank you, and good night.
Thank you.